Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to the April 20th Planning and Zoning Board meeting. I'd like to start out with the Clerk, please, calling the roll.
Okay, Ms. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Barongo?
Here.
Ms. Furtig? Mr. Gannon?
Here.
Ms. McCartney?
Here.
Mr. Rotella, I understand, will be absent. Jay Scheckman?
Here.
I'm sorry. Michael Waymoth?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Would everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where riches stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and freedom of speech.
Thank you very much. I'd like to start out by introducing the board members this evening. My name is Jaclyn Scott, and I'm the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board. Down in front is Mr. Steve Gannon, Ms. Sherri McCartney, Mary Furtig. To my right is Mr. John Barongo. Next to me is Mr. Michael Waymoth, and to my left is Mr. Jay Scheckman. We also have Ella Parker, who is the Urban Design Planning Manager this evening, or actually for the city, and she will introduce the staff.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, public. Tonight from staff, we have Assistant City Attorney Dwayne Spence and Shari Wallen. We have Lorraine Tappin, Yvonne Redding from our Planning Department, Carlan Grant, also from the Planning Department, Tyler LaForme, Adam Schnell. And we also have a representative from the Transportation Mobility Department, I don't see him here, but I know he is, and we have our city's consultant for the Transportation Mobility Department, thank you.
Did we introduce Ms. Leslie Harmon?
No, and Leslie Harmon is our minutes taker tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, for the board, has everyone reviewed the March 16th minutes, and are there any additions or corrections? If none, okay, motion to approve, is there a second? Sherri McCartney seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries.
I'm sorry.
Michael Waymoth made the motion, and Sherri McCartney seconded. Okay. Anyone that wishes to speak tonight on any of these items must be sworn in. So what I'd like to do now is have the attorney swear in anybody that feels they're going to come up and speak on any agenda item. Please stand.
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you, Shari. What we're going to do this evening is, if you are a member of the public and you wish to speak on any one of these agenda items, we would like to limit you to two to three minutes. There's a lot of issues here tonight, and a lot of people want to speak. And for those of you that have had experience, you understand that there'll be an awful lot of redundancy, which isn't fair to anyone, quite frankly. But we also don't want to limit anyone's ability to get up and speak on an issue. If you represent a neighborhood association, you will have up to five minutes. So I just ask all of you to be as cordial and nice as you can be as far as taking up time to repeat what a previous speaker has already spoken about. And the other thing I'll tell you is that if a speaker up here is talking about an issue, and they make the point, if that speaker wants to ask everybody in the audience that agrees with me, please stand, that will also speed things up, because it shows us who agrees with that without having to have everybody walk up one at a time. But I'm not trying to discourage you, I'm trying to be nice and realistic about this. Applicants will have 20 minutes, and then they'll have a 10-minute rebuttal if necessary. So with that being said, let us go ahead and begin with case number one. Case number UDP-S2102O, site plan level three, cluster development. I'll start out with asking the board, are there any disclosures, starting with Ms. Furtig? Yes?
I've visited the site, and that's...
Okay, Sherri?
I have none.
Site visit, Steve.
Jay?
No disclosures.
John?
No disclosures.
Site visit.
Okay, no disclosures on my part. Okay, is the applicant representative, or the applicant ready to speak, please? Please come up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Annabella Garcia from the Martin Architectural Group. Tonight, I will be speaking about our development, cluster development project on North, on Second Avenue.
You need some help with the computer?
No, can every, can all of you can see the project?
I can see you, now I can see the project.
Oh, okay, finally it's up on the screen. Okay, great. So this project is going to be located on 1022 Cluster Home Development, on 1022 Northeast, 22nd Avenue, Fort Lauderdale. And we have an area here, the red rectangle here in the center represents where the site is. We are east of North Andrew Avenue, and we are north of Sunrise Boulevard. We're right across the North Side Elementary School, and we're south of Baptibt Church area. This is what we're proposing. It's going to be a three-unit cluster development medium density. We have .23 acres, 10,123 square feet. This is actually zone residential, single-family duplex, medium density RD-15. As you can see, we have a beautiful master plan. This is going to look like a big, long, single-family house, but in reality, we'll have three individual units. This is actually, right now, vacant land. And we have provided all the necessary landscape requirements, and we have, we'll go through the units in just a minute. Again, the property is .23 acres, the zoning is an RM, RD-15. We are proposing three distinct different units, and they all range between 2,656 square feet, 2,536, 2,570, they're all three-story, I'm sorry, two-story, three units, two-car garage, with adequate guest parking all the way toward to the back. We have complied with all the proposed uses. We have the right setbacks to the front, to the sides, and to the rear. Over here, you can see an enlarged picture of what we're proposing on the ground floor. To the left will be the unit that will be facing Second Avenue. Then we have a middle unit, and then we have an end unit to the back. They all have proper parking requirement. This is a great room concept with different little tweaks in between these three units. Then this is what we're proposing on the second floor, there are all three bedrooms, two and a half bath, nice storage, walk-in closets. They're all three bedrooms, two and a half bath, nice storage, walk-in closets. It's just a really nice and charming little project. We're combining flat roofs with slope roof to create some sort of nice design. This is what we'll see from Second Avenue. This is the west elevation, which we consider the north. We have jog, the building quite substantial, and we have also added plenty of light. This is the south elevation, which is considered the entrance for the three cluster units. This is the rear, and this will be the north. Over here, this is the southwest view from the driveway. Again, this is a two-story contemporary style, very unique, very entrendy. I think it will be a great asset to the city. This is what we'll see towards the church, the northwest view. Again, we have a lot of windows, a lot of movement. This will be, obviously, this will be all fence. We eliminated the fence, so you could see better, more the architecture. Over here, this is again, this is the southeast view. Every unit will have on the second floor a little balcony, nice open windows, beautiful textures and materials in our design. This is the southwest view from the entrance. We are generating just one single entrance to the cluster complex. And you can see on the far right, that will be our parking lot, guest parking lot. Over here, it's another of the same view. Here is an aerial where we are locating the cluster development. It's right across from the school. I think it's going to be a really nice, location is super nice. Here is a street view on the southwest view, coming from Sunrise, going up north. Here is, on the opposite direction, northwest view. Here is another view from the church lot side, on the north side, looking at the south This is from the east, looking west. That's a rear part of our project. And then, this is it. It's very small, very simple. I hope you have the opportunity to review our package, and if you have any questions or concerns, are more than happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Does the Board have any questions for the applicant?
I have one. Steve Gannon, I didn't get from the picture exactly if there is a little backyard grassy area for each unit. It looked like it might be space for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, every unit has a backyard, yes.
All back, okay. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
I had a question as well.
Go ahead, John.
And it's funny, Steve asked about the backyard. That's what I wanted to ask about, too. So I was looking at the backyard, and you have gravel areas and sod. Is there a reason why there wasn't a shrub planted or trees planted?
We, it's a landscape requirement. So what you see here, it's pretty much what we're going to be doing. The green areas over here represent, well, number 16 will be our fence. The green, light green areas will be grass. And then, right across from the sliding glass door, there will be about two feet of concrete pad, but then the rest of it, it's a gravel area. Andres Montero is our landscape. That's because of the easement requirements. We cannot sod in that particular area.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Andres Montero. I'm the landscape architect working on this project. Yes, we originally had a hedge all along the north side of the property, but there is a requirement to keep an easement, a five-foot easement, that has to be clear of any obstruction, meaning, you know, fences, or shrubs, or any type of landscape that is taller than sod, unfortunately. That's why we had to remove it along that side of the property.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, with no more questions, I'd like to go ahead and open this to the public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this project? Okay, we will close the public hearing. The applicant, you have nothing else to say at this point, I'm sure, right? You're done? Okay.
We're done.
Any of the Board members have any additional questions?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on the easement. So there's a five-foot easement that's dedicated, it appears, at the entire perimeter of the property.
Yes.
And I'm looking at your, I don't see a north arrow on the side.
John, can you talk into the mic? Thanks.
I'm going to say it's the south property line, because I don't see the north arrow on the site plan. But on the south property line, there appears to be trees within that easement. And you're telling me there's, I planted shrubs in easements all the time. I'm surprised, is that, was that a staff comment?
Yes.
That they didn't have you remove it?
Yes, and actually, it's not around the property, it's around the building. So we have to leave a setback, an easement, you know, clear of any obstructions. On the north side, there is also a section on the east and west side, there's, you know, clear path of five-foot easement, or, it's another term for that. It's like, and on the south side, it's basically along the driveway, which save us from having to remove the trees and landscape on the, you know, along the perimeter of the property on the, on the south side.
Is Adam here tonight? Adam Schnell?
Yeah, it was Adams.
There's Adam.
Good evening, Adam Schnell, Urban Design and Planning, case planner. So as the applicant has stated, yes, we've essentially, as of late, kind of had a lot of enforcement issues and problems with their easements. There aren't supposed to be any obstructions within the easement area. So if there are shrubs or other things, it has to be traversable, so those actually have to be removed.
Okay. And where would I find these easements? Because I'm looking at the surveys, I don't see any proposed easements.
There is a specific plan that does have the easements shown on them. I don't have all of the plans in front of me at this current moment, but it was submitted with the packet. Now, the easements themselves are located along the northern property line. It does come southbound, and then it does kiss the building, essentially, and then go all the way to the west, and then back north. So it actually goes along the perimeter of the building rather than the property.
And Adam, you said this is a thing that is being enforced as of late?
There has been some confusion historically about placements of easements. And based upon recent conversations, it has been brought to our attention that this is how the easements should have been properly done historically. You can't have any shrubbery or any encroachment into the easement area, which one of the issues happens to be. Thank you. May I hand you the page that the easements are located on?
I have a sheet SP1 here. Is that the same?
No, SP2.
Next.
SP2? Yeah, I see that. So I'm only going to speak myself, but I'm sure some of the other Board members remember that staff always requires a perimeter easement on these properties. It's usually five feet, but that doesn't negate the landscape. We still have a perimeter landscape requirement on every property I think we've ever approved here. So how does one thing trump the other? I mean, if I'm required to have a perimeter buffer and a perimeter hedge, you're telling me that an easement cannot have landscape? I put sidewalks on it, so I'm a little bit...
Sidewalks would be permitted if it's traversable, and there is essentially the five-foot pathway that's required, but you can't have shrubbery within an easement area, unfortunately.
Then explain to me the landscape buffer. What is the landscape buffer for property?
In this particular instance, they've actually met the landscape requirements for the specific use requirements for cluster development. They do not require any hedges or trees on the side yards. There is a frontage requirement for trees and an overall requirement for trees on the Unfortunately, the easement location is essentially prohibiting the trees to be located against the property line.
This is news to me, and this would affect every property that has a perimeter easement, pretty much every property, including single-family residential. So if memory serves me right, in the landscape code, there is a perimeter buffer.
Correct.
If memory also serves me right, there's a fence requirement, and a fence, to have a fence, you need a shrub, as far as I remember. So I don't know how these things, you know...
There are instances where neighborhood compatibility requirements require that there be a fence. In this particular instance, this is a residential development. There is no fence requirement.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the Board?
I have another one along the same line, please. So what you're saying is those little backyard grassy areas are going to have grass, but no shrubs and no fence? They won't be fenced, is that correct?
We would, we would like to have a fence, so we're putting a fence up.
You're able to, okay, then.
Yes, we are. The only thing that we're not going to be able to do is to hedge us against the fence in order to meet the easement requirements.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, let's bring it back to the Board now, as far as, does anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Do you adopt the findings of fact in the staff report?
And the conditions. You approve with the findings of fact and the condition.
And the condition in the staff report, there's one condition.
Correct, Steve?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Jay Scheckman seconds. Okay, I'm going to read the resolution. "A resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan level three development permit for a three-unit cluster development located at 1022 Northeast Second Avenue, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, case number UDP-S21020." Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Barongo?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes, sorry.
It's okay. Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Motion carries.
Motion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on now to case number two, which is a plat review, case number PL-19004, 2050 Northwest 62nd Street. Let's start out with disclosures from the Board.
None.
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 Site visit, Steve.
I have none.
Site visit?
None. Okay. Is there someone here from the applicant to give a presentation? And how much time do you really need? 10 minutes? Five minutes?
Five, three.
Five. Okay, I'll give you six. I'm generous.
Minimal.
Go ahead, sir. Please give us your name.
Good afternoon, McLaughlin Engineering, Scott McLaughlin, McLaughlin Engineering, representing the applicant. This property is 2050 Cypress Creek Plat. It's a boundary plat. Plat is 2.13 acres, located on Cypress Creek Road, north of Executive Airport.
Can you show us something on our screen rather than your quick access?
Is that this? I didn't bring any of the documents for this on the curb.
IT?
Did you bring something to show us?
No.
Oh, you don't have anything to show us?
No, it's a boundary plat, so there's really nothing.
Okay, no problem.
I can show you the paper copy if you'd like.
No problem. I thought you were trying to show us something. Go ahead.
Okay.
Didn't mean to interrupt you.
So this plat is 2.13 acres on the north side of Executive Airport, and it's restricted to 50,000 square feet of office, 5,000 square feet of commercial. The 5,000 square feet of commercial will be the entrance for airport use. Plat is in review by DRC once again, and we're addressing all comments as they came out. The plat has been, plat has all the comments addressed, and we're seeking approval.
Thank you very much. You did it in less than three minutes. Okay. Is there any questions from the Board on this plat review, plat approval? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? I'm opening the public hearing, and now I'm closing the public hearing. Do any Board members have any questions? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the item as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, Steve.
Steve, okay. Please call the roll. No problem.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Barongo?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymoth?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go on now to case number, item number three. UDP-SR21002, rezoning of 1800 West State Road 84. Let's start out with disclosures from the Board. Mr. Barongo?
None.
Mr. Waymoth?
Site visit.
Jay?
None.
Steve?
Site visit.
Sherri? Mary?
None.
None. Okay. Who is here representing the applicant? And how much time do you need?
Just about two minutes.
Two minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent.
All right.
You get a gold star. I'm going to give you three, just in case.
Famous last words.
Okay, so hi, everyone. My name is Davina Bean. I'm actually the marketing company president here. I'm representing my corporation in reference to the development of this site. Currently, right now, we're occupying 1800 State Road, excuse me, let me make sure I have the address correct, 1800 West State Road 84. We're looking to develop an underused, abandoned property that's there for a six-story storage building as of right now. Most of the land usage that's there is permitted. However, there is a small section within the site that we're looking to still develop on that's preventing us from being able to move forward because of the actual zoning type. We're asking for you to go ahead and alter or change or allow us to go ahead and move forward with building this plan. I've submitted and gave you guys over our plan and usage at that facility. I think it would beautify the location, as well as my company does as well, for the area that's there is very industrialized, but we will go ahead and provide additional employment, as well as beautify the location and the residential area that follows right behind us.
Okay, that's it?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the Board? I have a question.
Okay.
There's an apartment building right behind you, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you guys talk to them or reach out to them about this?
Yes, we have reached out to them. Most of them are on board for us being able to develop in that area. It's very abandoned and underutilized right now. It has a wooden shack that's there. We are looking to make, to bring beautification to the location as well as employment.
So those apartments that are behind there aren't really rented or anything?
I'm sorry?
That building is not rentable at this point, behind there?
It is occupied as of right now, but we won't block or prohibit or make any type of problems for the residential use there. We have had numerous meetings with the homeowners' association there, as well as brought them into our actual location to go ahead and give us some type of feedback in reference to the development that will be there. We let them know the building of the location. It will, you know, prohibit any type of additional noise and excess traffic that's there as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the Board? Okay, hearing?
I have a question. Would, is your plan to have the ingress and egress on the site from State Road 84? Or are you going to have entry? I know we're not reviewing the site plan now, but I'm just, out of curiosity, do you... I know we're not reviewing the site plan now, but I'm just out of curiosity, do you plan on having entry from the residential portion of the neighborhood?
No, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just, okay. If there's no other questions, I'd like to open the public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak on this topic? Please come forward. And how much time do you need? Okay, perfect, another gold star.
Okay, yeah, my name is Kevin Slod, and I own the 18-year-old apartment building that sits on the south side of that piece of property, it's a 600-foot long, one-story apartment building.
That's the one I was talking about.
Okay, I've owned it since 1993. And the piece of property they're looking to build on, there's a U-Haul on the one on the west side, and then there's the property they're looking to build on. There is just like a wooden shack that could just fall down if you blew on it, but they're looking to occupy almost all of it and changing the zoning and putting up nearly a 90-foot building when I have everyone on my, when you walk out my apartment door, you're going to see a 90-foot slab wall out of, right out front in the apartment, so current zoning, I think, only allows for a 33-foot tall building when it's adjacent to residential. So I, you know, just, if it wasn't so tall, I wouldn't object to, you know, putting in a storage unit there, but it's, I mean, literally, you're going to walk out and where that wall is over there, you're going to see a 90-foot wall, or an 85.5-foot wall, so it kind of, I just don't, I don't feel that will help the value of the property, and I sit right, if you look at the plot plan and where I'm at, or the site plan, you'll see my property runs the whole length of their property. Okay?
Are you, do you, do you rent those properties by the day, by the month, by the week?
They're annual leases.
Okay.
I've owned them since 1993, I bought it, and just put a brand-new $80,000 new roof on both buildings, we're getting ready to repaint them, et cetera. But they're not, they're not weekly or monthly rentals, they are annual leases, so.
Okay, thank you very much, does anybody have any questions?
I've got a question, if there's somebody from city staff that can corroborate what he is suggesting, because I'm looking at this, and it's telling me that 150 feet is allowed there, and they're proposing 82 feet, so there seems to be a little bit of a disconnect. Adam, can you shed some light on that?
Sure, the underlying district, the B2 zoning district, does permit 150 feet in height.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
It does permit 150 feet in height.
Okay. Even with the abutting, I don't know, residential or multifamily falls under the same thing, I would assume it does.
Per the code, we have neighborhood compatibility requirements, after 40 feet in height, the building has to step back, additional one foot in height, blame my last, the building has to step back one additional foot for every additional foot in height, it's a one-to-one ratio. The building does meet those requirements, and it is set back from the rear property line to 62 feet, so it actually exceeds the setback requirements.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you all very much. Pardon me?
A question for staff, if I may?
Sure.
Can I get a clarification on the idea, let me see, that the, it will help rectify an irregular zoning pattern? What is meant by that?
So to the, how the zoning essentially has been done is not necessarily to the property line, but it took a distance off a center line to establish the B2 zoning district. So unfortunately, I don't have a zoning map in front of me, but almost all of the properties along State Road 84 are bifurcated and have some sort of either RD-15 or RMM-25 zoning designations in the rear of the property. The primary reason in which this application is before us today happens to be that the rear portion of the property, which is, I think, .11 acres on the rear, happens to be zoned RMM-25 and requires the allocation of commercial flex acreage, because they're using that portion of the property as storage capacity for the building. So there won't be, the building won't actually abut the RMM-25 zoning district, it's going to be within the B2 zoning district, which does permit by right self-storage facilities. So the only reason we're here today for the rezoning component is because of that storage capacity that's being utilized for the storage facility.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
But the current zoning, the RMM-25 has a 55-foot height, right? I'm just tagging on with what Mr. Weyman was asking, and that section of it is 55, increasing it to 150.
That is correct, if we rezone the back portion of this property, that portion of the property would permit up to 150 feet in height, but with that stated, you still have the neighborhood compatibility standards that have to be met. So there would be a requirement that any structure be set back 15 feet for the buffer requirements, and then after 40 feet in height, that structure would have to step back an additional foot for every foot in height up to half of the height of the building. So there would still be a transition for a structure that is in proximity to an RMM-25 zoning district.
Okay, and I, when you get to it, when you finish the public hearing, I have another question for the applicant, I don't know if you want me to ask that or not. We can, if there's no one else here to speak on it, we'll close the public hearing.
Yes, I made them back there.
Oh, there is, we're not, okay, you all can sit down, thank you, then, let's hear. Please give us your name, sir, how much time do you need?
Less than three minutes. I am representing Edgewood Civic Association, I'm the vice president.
What's your name?
Tom Turberville.
Go ahead, sir.
All right, I know we're here, it's mainly for rezoning from RMM-25 to B2 for a portion of this, but my main concern is traffic in the neighborhood. As you know, it's along State Road 84, however, ingress and egress is not truly from State Road 84, it needs to be gained from the Texas U-turn at the State Road 84 interchange in 995. My main concern is traffic through the neighborhood. I believe most people will not do that Texas U-turn, they'll go south along 15th Avenue, which is, I believe it's RD-15, and then east on southwest 30th Street, which is split between RD-15 and RS-8. I understand Adam does bring.
Let me interrupt you for just a second if you could.
Sure.
I don't need to be rude, but we're here tonight for a rezoning.
Sure.
And as it relates to traffic and traffic patterns, that has to be taken up with the city with, if they're going through DRC, Ella, could you help us on this?
If I may state, we're also here for a site plan, it's an SR case number, it's a site plan as well as a rezoning, I do want to clarify that.
Okay, the SR, are they both number four, site plan and rezoning?
They're under the same case number, so we're on item number three, correct? It's an SR number, which is a site plan and rezoning, they're coupled together.
Okay, I apologize.
I just want to clarify that, so if you do have a question in relation to the actual structure, so the statement you're making is, I believe, in relation to the actual structure.
Okay, very good, sorry, go ahead, sir.
All right, thanks, I actually didn't know that, but.
My mistake.
So my main concern is traffic through the neighborhood, I would, I would care to wager 90% of the people going to this facility will utilize the neighborhood. I understand the traffic numbers are low, I think 147 trips are estimated per day, which is low, but my concern is speed. We have issues within Edgewood right now with speeds through the neighborhood, so if this is passed through traffic, my concern is it'll get that much worse for 15th Avenue, 30th Street, and back along 18th Terrace.
How are they cutting through, what's the, I know what the destination is, but where, why are they cutting through the neighborhood? Why wouldn't they just be using 84 in and out?
This is, the only access to this property is along the Texas U-turn, so if you know the Texas U-turn, it's the smaller street that goes underneath the overpass of an interchange. So in other words, if you're traveling along State Road 84 itself, you cannot just make a eastbound right into it or a westbound left into this property, you need to get within the Texas U-turn underneath the interchange structure. And a lot of people, there's, State Road, I'm sorry, U-Haul is adjacent to it, and a lot of those people that visit that U-Haul utilize our neighborhood.
As a neighborhood, have you spent time with the U-Haul people, telling about your concerns and how you all might rectify it so that it's not negatively impacting you, but you allow them to do it? I mean, have you?
To my knowledge, I've only been vice president for not even a year, but I don't know if past board members have, but, so my comment would be to do something about maybe wayfinding signs, I know most people are going to use an app to get to this, and I'd care to wager the app would tell them to cut through our neighborhood, or maybe some kind of a speed study after development or such to get some kind of a traffic calming measure through our neighborhood.
Can I, can I ask staff a question? These people needed to be noticed about this, the association?
Yes.
Was there outreach from the U-Haul people with the neighborhood?
Yes, the case is subject to public participation requirements, and we do have an affidavit stating the applicant did the proper outreach.
Correct, the applicant did meet with the neighborhood association.
Okay. Applicant? Have you worked out the, have you worked out the issues with the neighborhood?
Yes, most of the neighborhood is on board, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you were at the meeting when we posted the signed publications, as well as the other neighboring companies and businesses and the residential that were behind. Most of the people are on board for us developing that area, as we stated before, it's very underutilized as of right now, it will provide additional employment, we look to beautify the location, adding retention as well as landscaping on the back end for the residential that's behind us.
What about the traffic, do you think you can work that out?
Of course.
U-Haul and the neighborhood?
Of course, I would seriously doubt that most of our customers would be venturing through that actual neighborhood location, as they do have direct access off of State Road 84. The service wrote this there.
It seems, sorry to interrupt, but it seems like the gentleman was saying you get off 84 and you've passed the property, so then to get to the property, you have to then go south on 15th Avenue, and then go, I would assume people would go then west on 30th Street and up 18th Terrace, is that right? Right, so is that the area that you're concerned of increased traffic on, right?
Yeah, we wouldn't have an entrance on the backside where the residential is as of right now. We do have a neighboring property that's next door, that's the U-Haul, we have had reduced traffic that's there, and it's never been a problem for the residential that's behind us. The area that the gentleman just referenced is the RD-15 area that's further behind our actual property, and I doubt that our actual customers will be venturing there. Most of the storage units that will be occupying this location will be a 24-hour storage facility where they're able to occupy and move in without actually having interaction with other, I guess, the facility itself, it will be like a computerized, and we're able to go ahead and schedule those customers as well. So in reference to increasing the actual traffic flow there, I don't believe that it would be a problem with the residential area that's behind us, but we're more than welcome to work with them and meet with them on any type of, you know, issues that they're currently having to outline this better. We did meet with most of the representatives that stay in that area, and at no time did they identify that this would be a problem during the public meetings.
So can I just add? Please do. You had stated that the resident, the apartment building's behind, most of the people supported it, but the owner has said that he has concerns, so I'm wondering, did you go to that, to that apartment building and hold a meeting there, did you meet with the owner? How do you, how did you ascertain that most of the people support this project?
Well, we had signs posted, as well as we scheduled times for the actual residents to come out and meet with us. I was physically on the property for between six and eight hours, and we actually flagged people in to go ahead and talk about our actual site development, as well as the representatives of the apartment complex that was behind us. In reference to us obstructing view, there's no direct access from our property to the actual apartment complex that will be right behind us that would prevent any type of development there or beautification. If anything, we will be adding an additional element for them.
But did you specifically meet with the owner of the complex, I guess is what my question is?
Well, no, I didn't, we did not meet with the owner, but we did have signed postings, we made it available for them to come out and meet with us, we signed petitions within the actual community, there's an HOA that's right behind us, gentleman that's here, he met with us there as well, as well as other business owners, they did go ahead and let us know that this would be a great increase for their actual area and give additional facilities that are there.
It seems like there's more work to be done in this project. I would be more comfortable hearing, you know, I mean, I just, the owner of the property should have been notified, it seems to me, of the rezoning, and I don't know, maybe he was, it just seems very unclear, but you are definitely increasing the height by almost 100 feet, so just kind of, I don't know. Wait a minute, we got to keep this in, just, go ahead, Mary. No, I just would, I mean, personally, I prefer to defer it and get something definitive from the neighbor since we're doing a rezoning, and we can say they're not going to build here and they're not going to build there, but we really don't have the, once it's done, we don't really have the ability to know that, so I would move to defer. Okay, I. To cut it short, because we have a lot, yeah. Okay, I, I'm concerned about the traffic pattern, I think it's solvable, but I wouldn't be, I'd rather not approve this and then have them having to fight and grapple for, you know, getting something resolved, so I'll include that in my motion to defer that they meet with the owner of the surrounding properties and talk to the HOA about traffic. Okay, is there a second to defer?
I would second that.
Is the applicant willing to defer?
Well, you haven't even closed the public meeting yet.
I know, I know, everything's going.
They actually get through that.
Oh, sorry about that. That's okay, let's, let's close the public hearing, thank you all very much. I'd like to ask the board if they want to make the staff report part of the record?
Sure.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so the staff report's part of the record, now there's a motion on the floor to defer this item. And is there a second, Jay, did you second that?
No.
I did.
Okay, is there a second to defer this?
I seconded that, Jackie.
Thank you, John. Okay, there's a motion to defer and a second, please call the roll.
Could we have a discussion on that?
We can have discussion, go ahead.
You know, I have a concern as well, not necessarily the same concern, but in the past, and staff probably correct me if I'm wrong, but I always thought we had separate applications for rezonings from site plans, and I'm looking through my package, and I have a site plan application here, I don't see a rezoning application, but I always thought we handled those separate, you always have votes on one, then the other as separate cases. Is this a new thing we're trying here at the City of Fort Lauderdale?
No.
That's generally, oh, sorry, DeWayne.
Assistant City Attorney DeWayne Spence, with this application, you are allocating commercial flexibility, so what is occurring is, and accordance with Section 47-28.3 of our code, in order to allocate commercial flexibility, it requires a review of a site plan level three permit, development permit.
And I have an application here for a site plan level four permit. That's what I'm looking.
That's incorrect, I should have said site plan level four development permit.
Okay, and then as to the rezoning, how is that covered?
So this is a rezoning, and because the parcel of land that is being rezoned on the land use plan is residential, they are requesting the allocation of commercial flexibility for that small triangular piece on the property, and because the underlying land use designation is residential, it requires you going through this process of allocating commercial flexibility in the rezoning process, and the code requires a site plan as part of ensuring that the development is compatible with the criteria of the code, so it's a more stringent review versus the common rezoning, which is. So it's a more stringent review versus the common rezoning, which is just determining the rezoning of the property based on the permitted uses. This makes sure that the actual development comports with the community.
So this is typical then?
I'm sorry?
This isn't special, because I'm used to seeing two case numbers when it comes to a rezoning and a site plan. And I find this very odd.
Correct.
Because I'm looking through applications, one saying site plan, the other, Adam just came up here and says, no, this is a rezoning. It's very confusing, because typically I have two cases that I'm looking at.
You typically see the allocation of flexibility unit, which is the flip side of this, which is the allocating of dwelling units to commercial parcels. This is the inverse, which is a residential parcel that is going to commercial. And I'll defer to the planners. I think I've gone too much into the planning.
No, that's correct. So really, the big difference is, you're right, most rezonings have a separate application, but to the point of the city attorney, Assistant City Attorney, the commercial, excuse me, the residential land use and the allocation of that commercial flex on top of the residential land use is what triggers the site plan tie-in to the rezoning. And so the site plan level four pulls the rezoning together with the site plan, so you're seeing both.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Are we ready to vote on this?
Does the applicant agree to the deferral?
That's, I was going to ask you. I think they should. I think we should ask them.
They have to, yeah, in accordance with 166.033 Florida statute.
So we're asking to defer this item to give you the opportunity of working out these details with your neighbors. You could not agree to the deferral and force us to vote and then we voted up or down, or you can agree to the deferral, work out the details with the neighbors, and then come back to us for approval.
Not a problem. I agree to the deferral.
You're fine with the deferral? Okay, great. Good decision.
When do you want to defer to?
Excuse me?
When would you like to defer to? The next meeting?
I would say the next meeting. You should be able to work this out in a month, right?
That's correct.
Okay, good. So make sure you guys all exchange information over there. Okay. Could we please now call the roll on the deferral?
Okay.
And let the minutes reflect, Leslie, that Mr. Cohen is here.
I.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that you give credit for being here.
Okay. So just to clarify, the motion is to defer case number UDP SR21002 till the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. So for roll.
I'm sorry, one more thing. We didn't hear Mr. Cohen, because folks aren't speaking in the mic, so can you just please speak in the mic? What did you say?
I said, she's great and that, that I'm not going to vote on this matter, because I came in late.
You have to vote unless you have a conflict.
Oh, okay. All right, I wasn't sure if those are the rules. I'll vote. I have no problem voting. All right. Let's do it.
Start with you, Mr. Cohen.
Chair, if I may also say that the date certain would be May 18th.
Okay. Thank you, Ella.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymef?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And let's move on now to case number four, UDP S21050, site plan level three, 500 Hendrix Isle. Let's start with disclosures, please, with Mr. Steve Gannon.
Site visit, email communications from various residents, and applicant's counsel.
Sherry?
I reviewed communication from various neighbors.
Okay, Mary?
I visited the site. I received approximately 10 to 12 emails, which I can either submit in the record or you can get the names from Ella who sent them to me. And I'm sure they're the same for all of us. And that's it.
Okay. Mr. Bronco?
Received various emails and site visit.
Mike?
I did a site visit and also received multiple emails from residents through the city.
Site visit, I spoke with Ms. Chalkis from Lockery and Chalkis. I spoke with several people that lived next door to the building.
Mm-hmm.
I've received several emails. I want to disclose, I don't think it's a conflict, but I want to disclose one of the individuals who lives next door to this building. I've represented his business in the past before. I never represented him. I don't know if I can get a legal opinion on that.
It's not a conflict.
Well, the approval or denial of this project resulted in a financial gain or loss for you?
No.
And do you feel like you can make a decision on this without any bias?
Yes.
Okay, then you don't, you're okay.
Okay, that's it.
Jay?
I received communications from applicant's counsel and from various neighbors.
I received so many communications, I ran out of paper printing them. I also spoke to legal counsel for the applicant and I also did a site visit. Okay. With that being said, Mr. Schein, are you representing the applicant?
Yes.
And how much time do you need?
Runtime is about 12 minutes.
Good deal. You're on.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Andrew Schein with Lockery and Chalkis here, representing the property owner. We're here for 500 Hendrix Isle. This is a faraway aerial and this is the close-up aerial. The project includes both sides of the right-of-way and I'll explain that. On the right side is east, it's an existing five-unit condo and that's where the building will be. On the west side is actually a livable use right now. Whether it was permitted or not in the past, we're not entirely sure. We know they got a variance for it in 1978, but regardless, we're getting, we're giving away the livable use and that is part of this project. This is the front elevation of the building. The building has seven units in total. It's five stories tall, 55 feet, and with 15 parking spaces, significant landscaping all around the building. This is a side view looking southeast. And this is the view from the waterway. The building itself was designed to really complement the waterway, balconies that flow like water around the building, but the balcony, balconies don't fully wrap around the building and that was part of the neighbors' concerns, was that balconies on the side would be facing them. So we did remove all of the balconies on the north and south. This is the illustrative site plan for the project. You can see on the top of it, which is the east side, the ground floor is the parking. And on the west, we added two additional parking spaces. So in the garage, there are 15 spaces, which is the required amount, but we also heard from neighbors that there's a lot of concern all up and down Hendrix Isle of guest parking, that there's not enough, they're all parking on the swales, they're parking wherever they want. So to mitigate that, we added two parking spots on the west side, which is at the bottom of this page. Those do not count towards our required parking. They are not tied to the development. The owner or the association will maintain them, but they are not tied to the development. They will be public parking, maybe for guests of this project, but guests of other developments can park there as well. And the rest is just landscaping. Again, we got rid of the livable use, even though it was fairly lucrative for the owner, we are getting rid of it with this application. So you don't have to read all this, but this is the modification of required yards criteria. That's why we're here tonight is for two reasons. One, it's a waterway use and two is the modification of required yards. I crossed out the first two sections because it's an or and those aren't really applicable to this project, but we're going in under three. And you can see bolded in 3B, it says, instead of subsections A, 3A, we can go below. So we'll be talking about these tonight. One is continuity of architectural features, which is listed in E, and I did bold the architectural features that this project has. It only needs to have four to meet this criteria, but it has balconies, terracing, color and material banding, mass changes, et cetera. And then going back up to D is really what we'll be talking about today, is that continuity of urban scale with adjacent properties, which includes height, proximity to the street front, and relationship of building size to the lot size. Some of these items seem like they could be subjective, but they really can be quantified in an objective way. And this is how we're going to quantify compatibility today. First is setbacks, which is raw number, what the number is on the sides. Two is relationship of building size to the lot size, which is in the criteria. And three is the overall building separation, which goes to the, there's additional criteria in there related to shadows. You can't cast a shadow on more than 50% of the waterway from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM on the vernal equinox. We did submit a shadow study, which shows that we meet that. And in order to analyze this, you really do need to compare it to other projects. And we started this analysis during the design phase to see what is compatible, what can we do to meet this criteria? So to do this, we analyzed 10 different projects on Hendrix Isle that have gotten yard modifications. I believe there are only 10. Starting all the way on the left of your screen is south, on the right of your screen is north. So we'll start with quantifying compatibility with setbacks, raw numbers. I'm going to go through each project, I'll do it fairly quickly, but do a little summary at the end and you'll see arrows. The arrow, the green arrow on the left is our project and the red arrow on the right is the project that we'll be discussing. So side setbacks, we are asking for 12 and 1/2 foot side setbacks. Ordinarily, half the height is the standard requirement, which would be 27 and 1/2 feet, but we're asking for 12 and 1/2 under the modification of required yard standards. I did see some communications, whether this is a variance or a rezoning, we're not asking for a variance or a rezoning here. It's a modification of required yards, it's, it's in the code. So we're proposing 12 and 1/2 foot setbacks. The first one we'll look at is 19-31 Hendrix Isle, which I believe was the first one to get a yard modification under the new code. They have 7 foot 10 inch setbacks on the side. And just to preface, these are all five-story buildings that we're going to be talking about to compare apples to apples. If there were a three or four-story building, I did not include it in this analysis because I want to make the comparison correct. So 19-31 Hendrix Isle, 7 foot 10 inch setbacks on the side. 45 Hendrix, further north, 20 foot setbacks on the side. 60 to 80 Hendrix does have 27 and 1/2 foot setbacks. 110 Hendrix, 11 feet 8 inch setbacks, so less than us. 124 Hendrix, which was just approved a couple of years ago and is currently under construction, has 10 foot setbacks on the side. Again, these are all 50, five-story buildings. 301 Hendrix has 7 foot setbacks on the side, again, five-story building. 309 Hendrix, 10 foot 1 inch setbacks on the side. 400 Hendrix, 20 foot setbacks. 444 Hendrix to our south has two different varying setbacks, 25 and 24. And then 532, 534, which is currently under construction, has 10 foot 2 inch setbacks. So overall, in setbacks, I did hear a lot of concerns about setting precedent for this. This is not a precedent-setting application. We're in the top 50% of biggest setbacks of any project that's gotten a yard modification. If we came in with 6 foot setbacks, that could be a precedent, but we're not. We are in line with other projects that have received yard modifications on Hendrix Isle and it really does go to show the continuity of these types of applications. The second way we'll quantify compatibility is relationship of building size to lot size. Now, this is an express criteria in the modification of required yard section. The way we'll do this is we're going to look at the street front and what percent of the street front is building. If you drive down Hendrix Isle, which I think everybody here did a site visit, you see these 200, 300 foot long lots with just walls of buildings on the side. They might have larger, large setbacks on the side, but it's still a street wall worth of building. We have, we're on a 100-foot lot, 12 and 1/2 foot setbacks on either side, 75% of our building, of our lot is building. The rest, 25% is open space. And just to backtrack a little bit, I do have all of the plans for all the projects that we're discussing tonight. They were verified with staff as well, if anybody wants further verification. 19 to 31 Hendrix Isle, 7 foot 10 inch setbacks on a 225-foot lot. 93% of that is building. So when you're driving on a 200-foot lot, 93% of that is building. 45 Hendrix, 80%. 20 foot setbacks, 200-foot lot. 60 to 80 Hendrix, 76.4%. And they did meet their setback, they met the half the height setback, but they still have a very, very large street wall where light and air cannot flow through a building. 110 Hendrix, they have an 88.3% building frontage. 11.7% of that is setbacks. 124 Hendrix, 80%. They are on a similar-sized lot to us, not similar, they're on the, in exactly the same-sized lot, 100-foot, and they were approved with 10-foot setbacks. We're asking for 12 and 1/2. 301 Hendrix, 90.6% of that is building. We're getting into very high numbers here. 309 Hendrix, this one is on a smaller lot, it's 75-foot lot. They did have smaller setbacks than we're requesting, but they were also on a smaller lot. So that's fairly understandable. They're at 73.1%. 400 Hendrix, 80% of that is building, 20% of setbacks where light and air can flow through. 440 Hendrix, 75%, same as us. Those are our neighbors to the south. They are on a 200-foot lot and they have varying, their setbacks equal 50 feet when combined. So very similar building frontage, but again, it's on a longer lot. And then 532, 534, it's an odd-shaped parcel. I didn't put an arrow there, but they're 84.7%. So we're in the, we're number two out of 11 when it comes to setbacks and building frontage as a percent of the lot. And this is really important because part of modification of required yards is allowing light and air to flow through, allowing view corridors to the waterway. And the raw number doesn't tell that full story. You really have to look at what the lot looks like. And 75, 25% of our lot, light, air, and views can go past it. So again, not precedent-setting, not even close to precedent-setting, actually. We're number two out of 11. The last one in quantifying compatibility is overall building separation. And this, you know, it depends on what your neighbors have done, but it does go to the point of allowing light and air to flow through. I didn't do a, I'm not doing a one-by-one on this one, but this is the building separation on the south. So this is adding our south setback to the property of the south's north setback. Right now, we are, the buildings are 30 feet 4 inches apart. With this project, they'll be further apart, 37 feet 9 inches apart, which, again, not precedent-setting, we have the second-largest building separation on the south of any project, of any ones that have gotten yard modifications. On the north, it's only 10 feet currently from building to building. We're proposing 17 feet 6 inches, so we're increasing the setback there. And then I looked at total building separation, which is the separation on the north and south added together. And again, we're in the top 50% here. This is not a precedent-setting and it's extremely compatible with, with the neighborhood and what's been done in the past here on Hendrix Isle. This is the, again, the proposed front elevation. Just a few more details as I still have time. There were concerns about drainage on Hendrix Isle and it's completely understandable, but right now, the property has a, an asphalt backout parking lot where any rain that comes on that property is going right into the street. The way to fix the drainage issue is not by not developing that property. As you can see here, significant amount of landscaping, 37% of the, over 37% of the site is landscaped and that will really help the drainage issue. Also, Broward County has significantly increased their drainage requirements over the last couple of decades and all, every single project is required to retain their own stormwater on-site. So we don't, we're not deviating from that, we're not allowed to deviate from that. All stormwater will be retained on-site. So there will not be any drainage issues from stormwater coming from our project, as there are now, because again, it's just asphalt on a downward slope into Hendrix Isle. And it won't be that case anymore. Couple more details, you can see the parking is all on the ground floor, there is one parking lift. The city allows parking lifts for residential uses as long as they're tied to a specific unit, which we will be doing. And their back is open to the waterway, so you'll be able to see through the building. There's no access on the backside for cars, but it's open to allow ventilation and further views there. We did do significant public outreach. Starting on November 23rd, we notified the neighborhood association's president about the DRC meeting, which was held in December. We've had numerous emails back and forth with the, the association of the building to the south. We do have a few support letters from the building to the south. Overall, we have 11 or 12 support letters for this project, which I can pass out after I speak. project, which I can pass out after I speak. And then March 8th, we sent out a notice to the public, to everyone within 300 feet of this development notifying them of our public participation meeting, which was held a little over a week later on March 17th. There were at least 23 people in attendance. I say at least because some people were hidden behind Zoom, and we didn't know how many people were in their household there. And we also met last week, April 13th, on-site with about 25 folks again. So there was significant public outreach, and we did take the neighbors' concerns, and a lot of these neighbors' concerns into account with this. No balconies on the north and south, added extra parking that we didn't need to add. And we also repaired the C-wall, which was about a $100,000 expense. So we would have had to do that anyway for this project, but we did it early on. Hopefully that mitigates some of the drainage issues there. But thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, hold on one second, Andrew. Do we want to move forward and ask Andrew questions later, or do you want to ask Andrew questions now? It's the board's pleasure. We have a lot of people here.
Public hearing.
Ask later, okay. Okay. Before we start with the public hearing, does the board want to make the staff report part of the record?
Yes.
Okay. Sherry moved. Jay seconded. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, staff report is part of the record. Okay. I want to go ahead and open the public hearing. I'd like to, again, set up some parameters. I know there's a lot of people here. I'd like to start out by saying, is there anyone here that wants to speak on this issue that has not been sworn in? Okay, so everybody here's been sworn in. Okay. For those of you that want to speak, I would like to limit it to 2 minutes, if we could. I mean, if you need a little more time, that's fine, but I want to get through it because I'm not sure how many people want to speak. If you're the president of the neighborhood, you get 5 minutes, and let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Why don't you line up if you're here to speak? How good would that be?
Can we get moved? When we close this, I've got a binder. I can put it.
Okay. Can you, can you do it in 2 minutes? I'm not trying to shortchange you, but is 2 minutes enough for you, or do you need more?
I'm a lobbyist for one of the associations.
Please speak in the mic.
Thank you.
Please speak in the mic.
I'm a lobbyist for 444 Hendricks, and I'd ask you for 5 or 6 minutes because we have some significant issues with the project.
Okay, are you seeking a party status?
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
You're a lobbyist for who?
I'm a lobbyist for the club at Hendrick's Isle located at 444 Hendricks.
Okay, you're a lobbyist. Okay. Help me, Sherry.
If they're not seeking the party status, then it's at your discretion to allow her additional time, but she won't be treated the same way as the applicant.
Right. How much time do you, do you want? 3 minutes would be great, okay?
I'd like 5. I've been trying to work this all in. There's a number of issues.
Okay, reluctantly, you have 5.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. My name is Pam Kane. I'm an attorney with Pan's Mauer Law Firm here in Fort Lauderdale. I represent the club at Hendrick's Isle, 444 Hendricks. We are concerned with the setbacks that the developer is requesting in the yard modifications, being that what they're requesting is 54.5% of the setback be reduced. What I'd like to do is talk about the criteria about which they can receive a yard modification. Andrew has discussed about the compatibility, and basically what he's done is he's provided you with numbers and distances and shown you what buildings would be consistent or compatible with their setback. One of the things I want to point out to you is that only 4, or less than 4, buildings that Andrew told you about are permitted to be considered under the criteria. The pursuant to the code in adjacent property is either 600 feet to the north or 300 feet on each side. That would leave only 4 buildings, 508 Hendricks, 516, 444, and 424. Now, we get to the consideration of what exactly is compatible. The developer has proposed to you that compatibility consists of whether or not the buildings are of the same distance away from each other. So they want you to use only the distance. We believe that compatibility is more than just distance. It's size and scale. And when you look at these 4 buildings that are the adjacent properties that you should be looking at, we're going to find that they're not compatible with what the developer is requesting. Let's take first the Boathouse property. It's at 424. It's a 2-story structure, and it has 10-foot setbacks. If we took this property and made it 2 and 1/2 times the size of what it is compatible to the 5 stories that the developer wants to put in, there would be a 27 and 1/2 foot setback. But because it's smaller, the mass is smaller, it doesn't need to meet that, and therefore, it's inconsistent and not compatible with what the developers propose. In addition, I'd like to point you to the area at La Sola. It's 516 to 524. It's a 5-story building, but it's on an irregular-shaped lot. It's on basically a triangle. And the structure has 27 and 1/2 foot setbacks in the front, 10 in the back, 15.4 in the front, 10 in the back. While it's not a straight line, the structure was built so that as you went past the structure, you weren't going to see a solid concrete block wall. You would have relief with lots of air. Now, with regard to the club at Hendricks, which is my client, we have a 5-foot, a 5-story building with a 25-foot setback on both the north and the south. Our required setback was 25.8 feet. So they received a modification of 8 inches off of the requirement. This modification is 1.66% of the required setback, unlike the developer's, which is 54.5. We don't believe that this is compatible at all. Finally, I want to go on to an additional consideration for compatibility is how the proposed development meets the intent and spirit of the dimensional regulations related to air, light, and shadow. I'm going to direct these issues solely to the south property line because this is where we're concerned with, with my client's property. The south side of the proposed development is basically a solid block wall with minimal linear elements that includes some linear fenestration and banding. There's no terracing, there's no cantilevering, there's no open usable living space or balconies. And I don't know where the developer got thought that our development didn't want balconies because we certainly would like balconies that step back, okay? At the club, there's 25 feet of mostly landscaped open area that's filled with light and air. There's open terracing and living areas and balconies that look over the entire open space facing the north property area.
I'm going to give you 30 more seconds. Can you?
Okay, so, so I want to go through, and I want to say that with regard to the last portion of that, the massing and the relationship to lot size. So with regard to the lot size, when you compare it to the comparison that I've given you earlier about the 4 properties that can only be looked at under the code and how they meet, there's no continuity between these properties and what the proposal is with their requested modification. And we do not believe that they meet the code. They're not compatible. It's not, there is no continuity for it. And we thank you. I wish I had additional time because we had more things. One other please issue, the parking that they're proposing to put in across the street. There's going to be 2 spaces. Those spaces are supposed to be available to everybody on the block as if they were public parking spaces. And yet, the proposed development is going to be paying for the maintenance. We foresee that there is going to be significant residential problems in trying to use those spaces, and we think that there's a better manager, management issue about how they can be handled, such as placing a sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker. How much time do you need?
Hi, my name's Randy Obi. I'm one of the founding members of the Hendrick's Isle, Isle of Venice.
How much time do you need, Randy?
Pardon?
How much time do you need?
I'd like 20 minutes, but I'll take 5 or 6.
How about 5? Can you do it in 5?
I gotta, I gotta get my, I have a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, 5 would be good. If you, if you need another 30 seconds.
Fine.
Go ahead.
Give me a second.
So again, I'm one of the founding members of our Neighborhood Association.
Pull that mic down closer to your mouth.
We are not anti-development. We're not opposed to 5-story buildings. However, we are opposed to the improper use of yard modification rules that seem to allow excessively large buildings on lots that are too small for them. We're, we're not opposing this project because we don't happen to like something that's allowed in the land use code. We're opposing this project because we don't think it meets the requirements for the yard modifications that are being requested. There are currently no 5-story buildings on Hendrick's Isle with the kind of yard modifications that are being requested for this project. We have a Development Review Committee for the association. We've met with city staff, and they provided a lot of those same addresses that Mr. Schein pointed out. So I'd like for us to look at some of those. Hold on. Okay, this is the first one. 19 to 31 Hendrick's Isle, 7 foot 10 setbacks. But you can see those are only for the townhouses at the end of the building. The rest of the building appears to have the appropriate setbacks. The next one is 45 Hendrick's Isle, 20-foot setbacks. As you can see, that's only for the first floor, floors. The top floor scaled back. 60 to 80 Hendrick's Isle, the only yard modification on this was for 5 foot for the yard trellises. And as you can probably see, it's not very significant. 110 Hendrick's Isle, 11 feet 8 inches. That happens to be to the first floor only, which is the parking garage. The rest of the building is setback to the appropriate number of feet. 124 Hendrick's Isle, these are 10 feet, 10 feet to the second-floor balcony. So the edge of that balcony is 10 feet from the property line. That balcony is 9 feet wide. So the actual setback to the, to the main part of the building is 19 feet. And it also should be noted, this project does not meet the definition of an adjacent property, so it shouldn't be considered with this project. 301 Hendrick's Isle, side yard setbacks at 7 feet. The 7 feet is really to that, that little wall at the bottom of the building, and then the main part of the first couple of floors is setback 2 or 3 more feet. And then, as you can see, that building is scaled back on every floor. So that, that's a whole lot different than 55 feet straight up. There's a lot of open space there. The next one is 400 Hendrick's Isle, and again, 4 stories at 20 feet. The top floor scaled back. This is 444 Hendrick's Isle. This is adjacent to the project. This is what the, the former speaker talked about. Very minimal yard modification. Here's what that building looks like. You know, less than a foot yard modification, and the top floor is scaled back. 534 Hendricks, this one is a little concerning to us. We don't think this project should have been approved. We've got 10-foot setbacks on the south side, and it, I mean, in our opinion, that clearly did not meet the requirements for that yard modification. So I respectfully ask you don't consider that with this project. One of the requirements for yard modification is, quote, "that the intent and spirit of the dimensional regulations of the applicable district concerning yards as relating to air, light, and shadow is maintained," end quote. To summarize, there's no way that the intent and spirit of the regulations would be maintained if this project is approved, nor were the intent and spirit of the regulations maintained for 534 Hendrick's Isle that was approved a couple of years ago. I think that you can see from my previous slides that the intent and spirit of the regulations were being maintained until a few years ago. The older modifications that were granted all seemed pretty reasonable. The most recent ones do not.
Mr. Obi, can I give you 30 more seconds, please?
I need 2 seconds, 5 seconds.
Okay, go ahead.
So our plea is to please deny the request for yard modifications for this project as we strongly believe they do not meet the requirements. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a good presentation. Next. How much time do you need? 2 minutes?
2 minutes.
You're the best.
Hey, do my name is Greg Lister. I live in 444 Hendricks.
Can you talk louder? Bring the mic up.
I live in 444 Hendricks, directly to the south of this development plan. Mr. Schein said that our building supported it. That's definitely not true. As a matter of fact, the, the most of the people back in the back are from our building and the building next to us. So actually, my building on the south, the building on the north side of the project, and also the Neighborhood Association, all strongly oppose this building. They're trying to shove a 55-foot building onto a 100-foot lot. I watched Mr. Schein's examples that he gave on, on the board.
He what, sir?
The examples that Mr. Schein gave of the other lots and trying to talk about compatibility with other buildings within the street. There's 150 buildings on Hendrick's Isle. I mean, he cherry-picked 10 of them. I mean, if we had time, I could go find 10 that did the exact opposite. I think it's excessive, and I've done zoning and building in other states. That's not Florida. But at the same time, if you're taking a 27.5 setback, what is legally allowed from what I read of the RMM 25 zone, and knocking that down to 12 foot 6, to me, that, that's an excessive amount. As, as our attorney said, that our building had an 8 inch, 8 inches, as far as a variance, a modification, that, to me, is reasonable. I think that what they're trying to put in this building is far excessive and overbuilding the street. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next. How much time do you need? 2 minutes?
About 3 minutes. Thanks.
3?
Yep.
Okay.
Joseph Prado, also on 444 Hendrick's Isle. I have a few points. One, I'm from Massachusetts. I've been living in Fort Lauderdale for 2 years as a resident. In my experience as a lawyer and a doctor in Massachusetts, we were not, we always were given a written notice from the zoning board if there were any changes or questions of changes. We received nothing. The only thing we got was a Zoom request from Mr. Schein and his organization, and that was just to show what they wanted to do. There was also a, a sign put up in front of this proposed building, and then they parked cars in front of it. It's only, it's only by walking by that we know, knew that this meeting was even going to exist. That's not the way you give notice in, in the states in which I've, I know. So that's one big concern I have. The second concern, you have rules already in place in this particular situation, and I talked to this attorney, and he certainly gave information to the developer so that they knew what the setbacks were going to be at the time they bought this property. So they knew what they were up against. The fact that you've got enough emails, that you have no more paper, means that people are opposed to this situation as it stands. So I looked up about zoning. The code was written for the kind of situation to protect the integrity of the community and to keep it aesthetically pleasing. The laws are designed to strike a balance between economic, historic, social, and aesthetic needs. Now, when you put up a 5-story concrete wall next Now, when you put up a five-story concrete wall next to our, our building, that is not a, in any kind of aesthetic process. So we'd appreciate if you review this and help us out in terms of making this project more compatible with what should be done.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Brad.
What part of Massachusetts are you from?
Uh, Norwood, Massachusetts.
Okay, thank you.
And I don't, I don't speak like that either. No, I try.
Okay. Is there any other members of the public that would wish to speak on this item? And have you been sworn in? I guess he's not coming up. Okay, if there's no one else wishing to speak, let's close the public hearing.
Hey, Jackie, I'm gonna abstain from this vote. I'm conflicted out. My sister was the landscape architect of this project.
I saw that. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Does anyone, uh, Mr. Schein, you want to do a rebuttal on this?
A few minutes, please.
Okay.
Uh, just a very brief responses. Um, I heard the lobbyists for the Building to the South said that they want balconies and fenestration on the south. If that's, when, when we were designing this building, we had been talking with neighbors and they didn't want that. So if they want that, we will gladly add balconies and windows to the south of this building.
Okay.
If you're gonna speak, you have to speak in the mic.
We can't, we can't have conversation back and forth. Go ahead, Andrew.
I, all I heard was that, that we aren't providing balconies and nobody told us that we shouldn't provide balcony.
Okay.
Um, but if, if the board wants to make it a condition to add balconies, we would happily do that. We did it for them, so.
Okay.
We'll gladly do that.
Okay, Mike, you wanna say something?
Just a quick question for you. Am I to believe that whichever side, all, all the properties have come forward, they all have a 27 and a half-foot setback up and down Hendrix Isle?
No. No, I, I.
So the setback's very dependent on your address?
Uh, well, are, are they required? They're required to have half of the height setback. Um, that's the general requirement. But, um, for whatever reason, over the past 24 years since the ULDR came into place, there have been numerous, numerous yard modification requests on Hendrix Isle. And the criteria is, is continuity and compatibility, and that precedent was set a long time ago. Um, we're not setting new precedent here, but for whatever reason, yard modifications happened on Hendrix Isle.
Do you know what years these were all built, by the way?
Um, I have some of them. Um, number one was built, uh, in 2001. I don't have the years for all of them. Five is under construction, 10 is under construction. The 444 building, someone else might be able to speak to it. 2007.
Seven.
Um, but it's all been happening over the past 24 years since that first yard modification was approved. Just a, a few more things to address.
Go ahead.
Um, the lobbyist for the Building to the South was concerned about the public parking. Um, we would have loved to give it to the city. The city doesn't want to maintain it, unfortunately. So we'll maintain it. Um, but she did ask for signs showing that it's public parking. Yes, we will definitely do that. Um, when we met with them on site, we agreed to that as well. So no issue doing that. That will be public parking. We're trying to alleviate the guest parking issue on Hendrix, not creep, not make it worse. Um, one of the speakers said that no project on Hendrix receives similar yard modifications, and then after that told you to ignore one that, that wasn't, uh, in favor of, of that argument. So projects on Hendrix Isle have gotten very similar yard modifications. And again, can't get to the slide right now, but, um, we're pretty smack in the middle when it comes to yard modifications and setbacks. Um, again, not a precedent setting, not egregious here. Um, I do understand that there are emotional arguments to this. But when you objectively look at the numbers, you know, we have the least building frontage of any property on, on Hendrix that has gotten yard modification, except for one. And when they talk about light and air flowing through a building, that's what it's about. It's about what percent of your lot is building and how far it is away from the neighboring property. Sorry, there are a lot of slides in here, so take me a little bit to go through it. Um, but when we're talking about building separation from the south, so 400 Hendrix, sorry. Uh, when we're talking about 400, 444 Hendrix to the south, they have a, a two-story building right to the south of them. I believe they're townhouses. Um, and they're 35 feet, two inches away from them, and they're a five-story building. We are gonna be large. No, 444 is a five-story building, um, and they are separated by a two-story building by 35 feet, two inches. We are gonna be a five-story building, separated from another five-story building by a larger distance than that. So we will be further from our neighbor to the south than our neighbor to the south is from them.
Okay, you guys, we really don't want to hear people making comments back and forth, if you don't mind.
And I have everybody's site plans to, uh, back that up as well. But we're further away from our neighbor to the south than they are. So, uh, and when it's, we're talking about continuity and consistency here, and the numbers don't lie. Uh, this is continuity and it is consistent with adjacent properties. We can't, we can't do what that last speaker said and ignore one because it shouldn't have been approved, or ignore two because it shouldn't have been approved. That's not how this works. Those are adjacent properties and we are, there is continuity with them. Um, so.
Okay.
We can't just take all the ones out that we don't like.
Okay, thank, you, you finished?
And, yes, that is all.
Okay. Uh, now, let's bring it back to the board.
Can I ask a quick question?
Questions, go ahead.
When you talk about building separation, are you talking about building separation at the ground floor? Because from some of the residents, I heard how they identified the ground floor as either the first unit, but as soon as you went up a level, they actually got further back. So are you measuring strictly at the ground floor?
Yes, for two reasons. One, that's where the light, air, and visibility goes through. So when you're at the ground floor level, that's, you know, that's where your visibility is. You're not standing up three, uh, 30 feet in the air and that'd be your, your line of sight. So that's number one, why we compared it that way. Number two, and staff may be, may be able to address this, um, but what I was told is that the code was interpreted differently, um, at the be, when, when this yard modification first came into the code. It used to be where you can do the, the wedding cake, the wedding, the, the tiered buildings, where only what's at the extremities is, is your setback. So if you have a two-story townhouse that's 20 feet, you're only required a 10-foot setback. Meanwhile, the rest of the building is 55 feet, which would have a 27 and a half-foot setback. If that were to come in today, the entire building would have to be a 27 and a half-foot setback. So it's interpreted differently now. We can't, we can no longer tier it and request those kinds of yard modifications. It's based on the overall total highest of, of the building in total, not what's flanked on the sides. Um, so some of the older buildings in 98, 99, 2000, those were still under that original interpretation. Most of them weren't. Most of them are not tiered back like that. There were three, I think, that he showed. But that was under the old way to interpret this. We would, if, if that could, if we could do that, that would be great. I mean, we could have a, a two-story 10 feet away. But it's, it's just not how it's interpreted anymore.
Any other questions from the, Mary, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I've heard a lot of math here tonight, um, and I appreciate it, and you gave an excellent presentation. But what I still haven't heard is why? Why are you requesting a yard modification? And I think one speaker made the point that when you all purchase the property, you know the go, the zoning and the area. So that brings me back to why.
And, and the answer is, it's only a 100-foot lot. Um, when you are designing a building, no matter how many stories, you're gonna have to have parking stalls, which have to be 18 feet long, driveways, which have to be 24 feet long, and then another parking stall on the other side that have to be 18 feet long, along with stairwells, all other ways that the site functions. Um, so on a 100-foot lot, you, you can't, you can't do anything on that lot without a yard modification, really. Uh, and, uh, it's just how the site is designed. If you're on a 200-foot lot, you have a little bit more wiggle room on, on how to design it. Um, but on a 100-foot lot, you don't. Um, and even still, design the way we are with yard modifications, we still have 25% of our lot being setbacks and landscaping and walkways and, you know, view corridors to the water. Um, so the real answer is it just can't be designed in a way that actually functions any other way. It's not like we're adding, it's not like we're, you know, doubling the number of units that are already on there. There are five condo units on, on that property and one live aboard on the other side for six units. We're only adding one more unit. So this is not a, it, this is not an overdevelopment of the site. It's at the density that the city allows. But ultimately, it's just to make the project function.
Thank you.
Any other question? I have a question, I guess I can speak now. Andrew, um, uh, so you would be agreeable to put the signs up that they want on that parking? Um, what about this discussion on balconies?
I, I, I think we need clarification from the neighbors. Um, we would gladly put balcony, we, we took them away for them, but we will gladly, you know, excitedly put balconies and more fenestration on the south. No issue at all. We were doing that for them. But if anyone wants to clarify on exactly what they want here, we're all ears.
Um, and what about the comment that was made from the gentleman from Massachusetts that said that he never got notification? I didn't ask him how close he lived to the project, but what was that?
Yeah, I think, I think that was more related to the city notifying them. Um, we did the notice that we needed to do. Um, I agree, the sign wasn't in the best place. They did see it, but there was, there's nowhere on that site to put the sign because it's all asphalt, and then there's an FPL power pole. So other than that, we put it on the, you know, close to the building just because there's nowhere else to put it.
You notified everybody within 300 feet?
Uh, well, that was for the public meeting that we held, yes. We did send out mail notice to everyone within 300 feet. I mean, we, we're also in contact with the, uh, the president of the association via email on and off. But I don't necessarily disagree with him that, you know, there could be more notice, but it's not, that's a city thing, not the applicant.
Okay, did any, does anyone from the board have any more questions? Okay. I just want to make a comment that since I've been on the Planning and Zoning Board, I've never seen a project on Hendrix Isle that we approved, and anybody can correct me if I'm wrong, that didn't have side yard modifications.
But with that, I would ask you to go back and look at the votes on those projects. But are we discussing this? Is the public hearing now closed?
The public hearing closed, yes, I closed a while ago.
Okay, and we are, okay, so now we're discussing it.
Yeah. What doesn't, I mean.
My concern with the conversation tonight is that it seems to be an assumption that beside, whatever the code is, doesn't really matter. What matters is you're just entitled to a side yard modification because somebody else got it. I think that's a very slippery slope to go down.
It.
It's, it's, um. I, I, as I said, I, I think Andrew's presentation was excellent. I think the speaker's presentation was excellent. But as I was listening, I'm wondering if we're gonna sit here every time and come up with our own formula of math, or if we just don't bother to consider that there are, there, there is a basic rule in place and why, and why? The why is important to me. Why do we have to every time grant yard modifications? The fact that you can't remember, Jackie, that's alarming because that, and by the way, I would ask you again, I want, go back and look at those votes.
It's not about not remembering. I can tell you that I've never seen anything fail for side yard modification since I've been on the board on Hendrix Isle. That's my point, and if I'm wrong, I apologize.
I'm not saying that, but I don't think it was unanimous, so I'm.
I did, I never said it was unanimous, Mary.
But going forward, is that it? Or do we just tell the staff tonight when we get together, hey, bring us something to change the side yard mod, uh, side yard requirements because we're just gonna modify it every time anyways? Or is there some type of a standard we use? And I thought the code gave us that standard, so, um, I.
Brad, go ahead.
So the issue that I have is that there is, um, more and more building going on in Fort Lauderdale, as, as we all know. And the problem that I have is kind of what Mary's saying, in that where, where does that, where does that end? You know, in terms of, and, and when we look at buildings, we always say like, oh, well, we compare it to other buildings that were passed, but at some point, somewhere down the line, we gotta be like, okay, we keep modifying, modifying, modifying. I kind of get what Mary's saying for once. Normally, I don't agree with Mary.
Thank you so much, Brad.
You're welcome. They're probably clapping because it's the first time that I've agreed with Mary. But that's kind of.
I think you did one other time.
One other time. It was something small, though. But that, that's kind of my worry, is that, you know, we keep looking at what was, and that very first one, right? The very first one that got the modification, we're probably like, oh, no big deal. It's like, you know, we're gonna mod.
It's going on and on and on.
Right, and, and but then it keeps going, then that person compares it to that person because of that. And that's a, and that's kind of, again, I, I don't know if it's a slippery slope that we're gonna go down, but I think the building, right. I think the building that was going on in 2000, that's why I asked for the dates, because I think the building that was going on in 2001 to 2005, I think that was a, a real rush to build. I think that everybody was very excited about it and, and it was like boomtown, you know, everything was, and it's like now, right? So like, I think we have the opportunity now to kind of start looking more closely at some of these modifications. That's, and like I said, I'm not anti-development. I've never been real anti-development. But at the same token, I think there's a, a point where you have to say like, hey, like, are we gonna just keep accepting them? Or are we going to start requiring some sort, something? You know, it just doesn't, it doesn't make, um, a lot of sense, especially now where everybody wants to build. So Hendrix Isle, all of a sudden, you'd be another, you know, five project on Hendrix Isle, and I don't even know what's in the pipeline. Do we know what's in the pipeline for Hendrix Isle? Are there other app, does anybody know what the other applications are? Are there other applications for Hendrix Isle pending that we know of?
I'm not aware of any, but Yvonne might, um, might have.
Here she comes. Here she comes, and she's got papers.
Yvonne Redding, Urban Design and Planning. There is one additional project proposed to come before you at, um, 10, I think it's 10 Hendrix Isle, more closer to the bridge, that's on a 200-foot lot, and I don't have the exact yard modification request.
But they're asking for a yard modification as well.
And they did get a supporting letter from the Home.
I get it.
Association for their yard modification.
I got it, but, and.
They are requesting a yard.
Okay. They're not requesting a yard?
They are requesting a yard modification.
And you know what the setbacks are?
I do not have that off the top of my head, but I think it might be a five-foot or six-foot
So this is kind of like, you know, it's just like kind of the thing now, is to request, that, that's what I'm worried about. And, and that's kind of.
It's been done ever since I've been on the board.
Right, I get it. It's just, but I mean, it doesn't mean that it should keep going, right? I mean, at some point, you know, just because we, just because it's been done ever since time, you know?
But we don't really even know that because we don't have every project.
Right, I don't.
But I absolutely agree with you, Brad, so.
Thank you. Oh, this, we're having a, we're having a real sit-down.
And, and, and I guess what I wonder, Jackie, is when they purchase the property, do they just say, oh, don't worry about that, they're gonna give you a yard modification?
Well, I think it's in the code that you can, I think it's in the.
So I, I just, I just. I think this is like, you know, this is 27 feet reduced down to 12. I, I know I've got a few inches out there. That's quite a reduction. And I, obviously, I am not going to support this because I, um, I think there are legitimate concerns about the size of the modification, and I have a lot of outs, other outstanding questions, but in any event, um, okay, I'll stop.
So the code is 25 feet, is that right?
Half the, here, let me read it to you from the.
It's 27 and they're, they're asking for 12.
Five-foot setback, yeah.
That's on the front and the back, though. On the sides, they're asking 12.
Sherry, go ahead.
So I, I have some thoughts on, on compatibility and it, I, surprisingly rings true with some
of the things that Mary is saying, and Brad, too. So what I, what I'm thinking is that compatibility, at least in this case, shouldn't be comparative, right? Because of the reasons that everybody's saying. If it's comparative, that means there are always this one-upping the next guy. And even though Mr. Schein said that some of the buildings were, you know, 80% covered, and his is only 75, you know, what that means is if we're constantly comparing, it potentially constantly grows. I think it means, it should be in the inverse because it wouldn't be compatible if we continue to grow. Therefore, larger the percentage covered, the less compatible it is as we go along. So by virtue of the fact that we have stacked up this, this little aisle with large buildings giving them all the yard reductions, that we have, you know, made it less compatible going forward for larger projects. And, you know, so I think it's relative, not comparative. And in this case, I think that relatively speaking, giving this yard reduction as compared to all the other reductions that were given, it's too large. It's too large.
Any other comments from the board?
So, so yeah, I'm looking at the comparison. It looks like the code would require like 27 feet, 6 inches versus what's proposed, which is, you know, less than half of that, like 12 feet, 6 inches. Like, it, it looks like anything that's tried to get developed on Hendrick's Isle over the years, for the most part, if it's a site that's not incredibly wide, right? If you have 200-foot width, then that's obviously double the width of a site like this. In order for things to get built, it seems like the original 20-foot-7 code has been a little bit, maybe hasn't, you know, made it feasible for much of the properties to be redeveloped economically. And so the question is then, like, if, if there was some, something that, in the code that wasn't, that, that didn't allow, you know, the, the properties to achieve like their highest and best use, and there needs to be an exception granted, like, that's obviously been the case over and over again. So the question is then, okay, where do you draw the line? Like, what, what is the amount? You know, if not, if not 12.6 feet, Mary, like, is there a certain number of feet that you would be comfortable with or that people would be comfortable with? Or I'm just curious if the rest of the board thinks that, you know, those of you who have expressed opposition, like that it's, you know, 27 feet or bust.
I, I... Go ahead, go ahead, Steve. Because I might want to answer that, too.
It's long lines of Jay. Can everyone hear me? Is my mic on? Yeah, it is, okay. So, along with what Jay said, if we take...
I'm sorry, I'm having difficulty hearing you. If you could just go a little closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now? There we go.
Yes, much better, thank you.
My light was on, but it wasn't working. Okay, thanks. So, so my point is, and I think Jay is going along in this direction, is that when you have a 200-foot building and you have setbacks on either side, let's call it 25 feet on each side, you still don't have a setback, setbacks in the middle of that building if, as if it were two separate parcels built separately. And those two separate, had they been built like that, they would be, you would have a corridor of view and light and all that sort of thing. When you get, so if you compare a 200-foot building, how much view corridor on each side is there, to a 200, 100-foot lot buildings with a setback in the middle, they're going to be much closer to the same. Does that make sense? Am I, am I getting that? That's why I think the justification is there to, to allow smaller 100-foot lots to scrunch the setback a little bit. Is, am I making sense? Is that sort of, you understand what I'm saying at least? And Mary, what do you feel about that?
I, I, I feel that we have a code. We can change the rules. We have the ability to bring forward changes that we suggest. And we're sitting here, property by property, rationalizing why something should happen when in fact we have a code. Is the 200-foot, you know, then I would ask you, is the 200-foot, or whatever the length of 444 is, the property's 200 feet, so there's not, there's tonight that are, is that what's allowed by code? And, and so, you know, I think they've thrown a lot of numbers at us tonight. But my problem is, the only measurement we have to determine whether it is correct or not is the measurement that was passed in the code. And can we vary that? Yes. I think this is too much variation. And, and I, I don't, you say, what's a proper variation? You know, Jay, I think that's something that we have to determine on a case-by-case basis. So even if you voted to modify something before, you have a second, second, and I, and I don't even want to consider other properties because I think we should be considering what's in the, what's this project is on this piece of property. And on this, they're asking to have setbacks, on the side, side yard setbacks of 12 feet instead of 27. I think that's a huge ask. And so again, obviously, I'll be voting no. And, and to Brad's point, this goes beyond Hendrick's Isle to the next person that comes to us and says, well, you did this all along Hendrick's. Well, so, okay, let's do it here. Let's do it. Everybody should get a side yard modification. I, I just, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that's the rational way to discuss it.
Sherry?
Yes, if I could just make a suggestion, just whether you are leaning towards approving or denying, you should apply the, the actual code, the criteria that's in the code, which is 47.23.11. And you should start out by asking, the first one is number one, I believe the applicant said that's not applicable, then you have A, A number one, and then A2, and then A3. I think you should go down the line as far as your discussion is concerned, and decide whether or not it meets the criteria that's in the code rather than, you know, coming up with anything else. So I, whether you're approving or denying, I just suggest you lean the discussion towards the, the words that are in this code. Just a suggestion.
Madam Chair, if I may. Jay, I, I am following you down the rabbit hole. I mean, at what point, and a slippery slope is a slippery slope. And it's as slippery at the top as it is at the bottom, and you can't really stop it on the way down. So what is the right number? I don't know. A question I've got, has there been a project on Hendrick's Isle that's been developed that has had no side yard modification? So as we talk about, you know, modifying it down to 12 and a half, has there been one that's had the 27-foot separation and went through without being challenged and...
I don't know that we can answer that because I don't think we have the data to answer.
Especially one that's 100 feet wide.
Well, I don't, that it's, is all or nothing here either. I mean, it doesn't have to be 27 feet or nothing, or whatever they're asking for, or nothing. I think that there might be something that...
I'm sorry, Sherry. I really cannot hear you. If you could just eat that mic, thank you so much.
Delicious.
You've got to keep it real close now.
Y'all like you're mad.
So I, again, I'm thinking that it's all relative. So, and that we don't have to go all out one direction or the other, absolutely deny them or absolutely grant everything that's requested. I think it has to be taken, again, on a case-by-case basis, and it has to be, you know, relative. I think that it becomes less compatible the more you have of it. And I think if there's any kind of a marker for compatibility, it's that, that the more you have that is, that greater properties, greater reductions of setback, then the next item is less compatible because you're, you're covering space far beyond the intended, the intended 27 feet along the whole course. I mean, if you think about it, the 27 feet applied to the entire aisle, right? The entire finger. That's not what's happening here. They're much less on all of them. So you have to have it compared to what's happening. I think that you could, they could possibly do it with a different setback. I just think this particular setback is, exceeds compatibility.
I think the challenge that, and I'm just speculating, but hearing what Mr. Schein said with 18-foot park installs, 24-foot in and out, 18-foot, that's 50 feet. That starts to narrow it down. If you try to make this a smaller project to get it lower and so on, so you still need that width. So it's not a density issue. It's, it's, it's what can you operate within? And so whether you've got a, you know, three-story building, you know, it, it starts to get still down closer to that 12 and a half, but you still need to have 50 feet just to park. Forget about anything else, just to park two vehicles.
Right, I agree. Not, it's not density, right?
And yet, they did buy it. I mean, I'm assuming they knew that when they, when they bought it. I don't know. I, I mean, at what point, I, I'm just, is the code just going to be in place then for those properties that are of a certain dimension? Or, I, I, I don't know, Michael. I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm, it's a serious question. It's a...
Look on the, look in your package as far as, like Sherry just talked about, under modifications of yards. Sherry, is this is what you wanted us to do? Okay, so the criteria for modification, modification of required yards. Look at this.
47.23.11A, and then you go to 1. The applicant's position in, in the backup is that A1 doesn't apply.
Right.
Whether you agree with that or not, but you could look at 1, and then go to 2. These are ors. So then you go to 2. By adjusting the location of the structure on the site, when the site abuts the intercoastal waterway or other permanent public open space, land or water, and it is found that allowing a reduction is compatible with adjacent properties as defined in this section. Then it's another or. The applicant has a response in the backup to number 2. If you read it and you agree with it, you could state that on the record or state that you don't agree with it. Then 3, by adjustment of the yards, it is found, and this is another or, that there is continuity of yards between the proposed development and adjacent properties, and there is continuity of architectural features with adjacent properties which encourages public pedestrian interaction between the proposed development and the public street, or instead of subsections A3A and B, it is found that. And then you have lots of other criteria there that the applicant did respond to. So my suggestion is to go through this criteria...
Okay.
...and decide whether or not the applicant has proven their case. And if you state that they haven't, then just state that on the record as to what they have been unable to prove. But I suggest, just limiting your discussion to what's in this code again, please.
Okay. So on number 1, criteria for modification of side yards, do you want me to read what it is and then read the response? Or do you all want to just read this yourselves? And we'll look at the response. The, the applicant says that this is not applicable.
And keep in mind, this is or, so they don't have to meet that. You could just skip to the other one if you don't want to bother with it. It's all ors.
Okay. Okay, so this, by adjusting the location of the structure on the site, when the site abuts the intercoastal waterway or other permanent public open space, land or water, it's found that allowing a reduction is compatible with adjacent properties as defined in this section. The response is the reduction is compatible with and consistent with adjacent properties. The proposed building will be set back 12 feet, 6 inches from the north and south property lines, and 20 feet from the east property line. The following table shows the setbacks of various adjacent properties. So do we agree with that?
The definition of adjacent properties is in 5. It says adjacent properties shall mean buildings located on the same side of and fronting the same right-of-way as the proposed development, and within a 600-foot distance on one side or 300-foot distance on both sides of the proposed development. And staff is here to assist if you need more help with that.
I'm not sure what you're reading, Sherry. You got me...
That's in 5, so I'm not, they're not going to talk about that in their rationale, but it's 47.23A, number 5. So I'm not sure if you could pull it up on your computer, but it has definitions of adjacent properties right there in that definition.
Do you see where she's talking, Mike?
I can read it again if you'd like.
I, I don't know what page you're on. I'm looking at the Lochry Chakras.
It's not noted in there. I'm reading from our code. Number 5 is the definition of adjacent property. So remember how it said that it's defined as herein? So I'm just assisting you with defining adjacent properties in accordance with our code.
Does staff agree that the response is proposed adjacent properties meets the definition?
Yvonne, you're up.
That's okay. I, I can help address that a little bit while Yvonne is getting herself situated. So yes, we did a very similar analysis that you've sort of seen laid out before you as part of the applicant's presentation, which was using some of these very criteria and looking at the overall buildings that have been developed to date over the last 20, even more so, years. And, you know, looking at the continuity of the architectural features, looking at the size of this lot in comparison to the others. I think Member Ganon made a good point about the fact that there have been a lot of much more massive developments that have been constructed along this aisle. And, you know, we cannot deny that they exist there today. So when we do an analysis of neighborhood compatibility, certainly those existing larger massive structures are part of that environment and what's, what creates the neighborhood today. So to that point, you know, for some of this other criteria, for example, waterway use talks about visibility to the waterfront. You heard the applicant sort of explain that visibility to the waterfront from a pedestrian perspective would be through those side yards. So if you have, in comparison to this building, which has a 100-foot lot versus a building that has much larger lot, like 300 feet, 200 feet, some of the setbacks that have been granted over time in comparison actually do cover more of it with building, not perhaps allowing as many views to the waterfront. There's also criteria in the modification of required yards that talks about that continuity of architectural features. You heard tonight about sort of the articulation of the building, the massing of it, the fact that it's got a lot of glass coverage, that it's got sort of a layering of the balconies. Again, when you compare some of the other buildings, there are similarities, and they do sort of have the same, you know, they, they meet that architectural pattern. In neighborhood compatibility, the criteria refer to things such as improvements or modifications either onsite or within the public right-of-way to mitigate adverse impacts such as traffic, noise, odors, shadow, scale, visual nuisances. Again, all of these aspects were evaluated by staff, and in comparison to the existing pattern and the compatibility of, of, you know, what exists, we concur with the applicant's findings.
Yvonne?
Ditto. I don't know if I can add anything to that, except I do believe that Mr. Schein...
You speak louder.
Sorry. I do believe that Mr. Schein did address the compatibility with adjacent properties and went beyond the limits to include other properties, to show the similarities in setbacks in height.
Yeah, that didn't answer my question. I guess the, the question was, this is, we're, the city attorney has asked us to review and determine whether or not this section of the code is being met, and that was to compare to adjacent properties. So the applicant has provided like six properties that are quote-unquote adjacent. So the question is, does the city staff agree that these constitute adjacent properties as outlined in the code?
So the adjacent properties would be the 444 Hendrick's Isle, which we feel is similar in, in this request. And then the other property immediately to the north is a lower scale and has a smaller setback to the property line and is closer to the water than this property, but that is not included because it was not a, it's not a large building in height as this one. But in that respect, 444 would not have been compatible because of this site, which is 500, which is of lower scale currently. So it, it's the systematic redevelopment of the properties. And if you went by the code today, maybe 444, which is voted 6 to 3 in favor of the modification back in, sorry. I have to get my paper. So I have that in my notes somewhere, sorry. So 444 was approved in 2003 at a vote of 6 to 3 for the yard modification, but at that time, it was next to this property, which is lower scale, and next to a townhouse development, which is also lower scale. So they were using the same type of criteria that would probably deny them today.
So when they testified, they said they got an 8-inch reduction. Is that accurate or not accurate?
It's 8 inches, correct.
They got an 8-inch. And this, and this application is asking for a 15-foot?
Correct, but under the yard modification to come before you, they should have met the same criteria, which meant being compatible to either side of them.
So you're saying that an, an 8-inch yard modification is compat, is, is similar or the same as a 15-foot yard modification, that in fact, the size of the yard modification doesn't matter at all?
No, I'm saying that they should have met the same criteria as being compatible to the neighboring properties, and 444... And 444 is on a 200-foot parcel and the building length is twice what this, the 500 parcel is.
Because it's on twice as much.
Yes.
Yeah. Who's talking?
It's all subjective. I mean, it's what's being built to you at the time, next year. At the time, that's what she's trying to, I think, identify, is that was a poor building on either side of 444. That was, that's why it was only an eight-inch modification. Had it been a five-story building, it would have been more. I'm assuming that's what I'm hearing.
Yes.
So are we-
It's a 51-foot, four-inch building, the 444. So for, to come to you today, it would have still had to meet the same criteria as being compatible with either side of them. And that request, how would you be compatible with a townhouse development and this lower scale that's at 500? It shouldn't have, it wouldn't have come before you at all. That's what I'm saying.
My question is, do you think that, I mean, we don't know what was said back then. If it's eight inches, they might have been like eight inches. And it's, you know, like, I don't know if they considered the compatibility. They should have, but I don't know.
This is not easy. Well, so, okay, so as far as, that's the modification of the side yards, correct? And the compatibility, if they meet it? Does staff feel the adequacy requirements are-
Yes.
I mean, I noticed that you all, your conditions for, I don't even think there was any conditions for approval.
There's the park impact fees that are required to be made, and there's the school concurrency fees that are required.
I can't hear you.
Sorry. There is the school mitigation fees that are required and the park-
Parks fee. That was it. Everything else was within, in your opinion, was meeting the code.
Correct, except for the request for the yard modification and the pool and the other amenities along the waterway.
So you're saying that you didn't say the yard modification met the code?
It is up to the-
Not in your opinion?
It's up to, it's up to the board.
Thank you. Well, they're asking for a modification. They're, they're not, the staff isn't taking a position one way or the other, which is what I agree, I thought we had all agreed on. They're saying it's our decision as to whether it meets-
Correct, correct.
-the code. Okay. I, I know that the applicant thinks it meets the code.
Right, right, right.
Okay.
I'd like to say one last thing. If this building were duplicated on the 100-foot lot just north of it, I think there would be as much view going to the water as there is on the 200-foot lot 444 with their setbacks. If it were duplicated with these setbacks, that's what I'm, I'm getting at. And it has, it's along the lines of the smaller lot, about the same view corridor you're going to have with that 200 that is contiguous, that only has setbacks on either side. You'll have setbacks on either side of these 200, four different setbacks adding up.
Can I ask staff, where in the code, you mentioned the view corridor a couple times, which, which one of these, is it under three? Section three?
Under the waterway use criteria and, so the, I can read it to be specific. So it states that buildings on parcels abutting waterways in multifamily districts shall be designed to preserve the character of the city and neighborhood in which they are located, harmonize with other development in the area, and protect and enhance the scenic quality and tranquility of the water. Special design provisions are required to realize these objectives and at the same time permit a reasonable use of land based on site and building design setbacks, landscaping provisions, and their relation to the waterway and other uses within the existing context and overall public realm. So in talking about the waterfront and, and sort of the scenic quality, that's where, you know, we're really talking about some of these views, the view sheds.
Okay, thank you.
So what is the wish of the board at this point? Yeah, someone, we have a, we have a resolution to deny or a resolution to approve. We need someone to make a motion. Shari, am I correct?
Yes. Again, I suggest if you're, whatever motion that you make, just make sure that you cite to the code and state clearly your basis for approving or denying.
Does anybody want to make a motion to approve or deny?
I'll move to deny based on the fact that I do not believe that it meets the code. Is that what I'm supposed to say, Shari?
It would be, which section of the code do you think it doesn't meet? Because there's several that apply to this. They're asking for a site plan, of course, but there's different things.
You handed us a resolution. I've got like four of them up here for different projects, so let me see.
We've only got two resolutions.
I, I understand, but we had them for other things, so I'm trying to pull the right one to say that.
Are you denying it based on the yard modifications?
Yes.
So if you would go to 472311, and if you don't have that in front of you, then you can go to the backup, the Lochry and Chakras backup, where it has modifications of yards and it has the 43, 472311 there. So you can state which criteria you think it does not meet. So you have 472311A, and then there's one where the applicant says it's not applicable. Then you have two, they have a response here. This is dealing with, you had an extensive discussion on this, whether or not you believe that this information was accurate, et cetera. And then you have three, they have responses to that as well, and then your testimony on all of these things. So I would just suggest picking which criteria you think they did not meet. And remember that it's or, so they, they responded to two and they also responded to three, so I'd suggest making sure that you, you state that they meet neither.
Okay, then that's what I'll state.
But you, you have to explain why.
Can, can I ask a procedural question, Mary? Shari? If this motion to deny does not get a vote, get the, does not win, then what do we do after that?
You would want to do a motion to approve and then-
Okay.
-we'll keep going until something-
Okay, gotcha.
-passes.
Okay. Okay, Mary, you want to make your motion?
Well, okay, I'll make my motion to deny based on the fact that I, I don't find it meets the effort. I, I don't feel that the information is available to say that it supports the conclusion reached in their documentation on side yard modifications.
May I ask, do you believe that the application has not met 472311A2?
Okay, I'm looking, I'm trying to grab, thank goodness that Andrew wrote all of this out so nicely for us, so yes, I'm gonna, I'm just pulling that up.
And is that based on the testimony that you've heard tonight?
That's based on the totality of the testimony I've heard tonight.
Do you believe that the application does not meet 472311A3?
Correct.
And is that based on the testimony that you've heard tonight?
Yes.
Along with the staff report and all the information presented to you?
Yes.
Do you believe that any other criteria has not been met in the application?
I think that was the actual, only one that you all outlined, Shari.
There's also four. They did file a response to that.
Okay, thanks, Brad. Hold on. I'm trying to quickly read through their report that they filed the response on.
That's fine, take your time.
All right, now you're telling me we've already done two, correct?
Yes, we have, we already said that 472311A2 and three have not been met based on the testimony that you've heard tonight, along with the documentation that you've reviewed, including the staff report and other documents. So it's just a question of whether or not you believe that 472311A4 has been met. You could state that it has been met, or you could state that it hasn't, and you just have to clarify.
Okay, I'm just looking to, I'm trying to find that on the papers in front of me, I'm sorry.
Sure, no problem.
So why don't you read that to me?
In addition to subsection A 1, 2, or 3, the following shall be met. The applicable minimums pertaining to all zoning requirements applicable to the development are met. And then if you look at the Lochry and Chakras backup, they have a response here saying all of their zoning requirements are met. So if you believe that that's, that has been met, then you could say yes, and we could just leave it at that. And then B, they have a huge paragraph here, I don't want to bore you with reading it, but they have a response to that as well. They indicated that a shadow study was provided regarding the, the shadow issue. That didn't come up previously as far as your discussion, so you could, you don't have to say that that doesn't apply, doesn't meet.
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to go with the two things that we mentioned before.
Just those two? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay.
Jackie, do you want to read the resolution or do you want me to?
Sure. I'll read the resolution. Planning and zoning board resolution 20, uh-oh. I apologize. This is site plan. Why is it not on here, Shari?
I can read it if you'd like.
Yeah, the resolution number just says 20 dash and nothing else.
Yes, they give it a number after it passes because some are continued, et cetera. That's why.
Okay, so a resolution of the planning and zoning board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, denying a site plan level three development permit for the property located at 500 and Exile, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the RMM 25 zoning district, for the development of a five-story structure with seven multifamily units and denying a waterway use and yard modification, case number UDP dash S21050. Leslie, please call the roll.
Do we have any discussion first?
Yes, we sure can have discussion. Sorry, Jay.
No, no problem.
I think we need to talk more about this.
I, I don't know that 12 feet, you know, 6 inches is, you know, compatible per se, especially on, I mean, if you look at the adjacent properties to the south, it's 24 feet, so they must have had a variance to build that site since the requirement is 27, right? So there's even the site, so, and then the other site to the, the other side is like 10 feet, if I'm not mistaken. What's the address, 500? No, that one's 12 feet. What's the address to the north? 44, 424? Yeah, so that one's 10 feet 6 inches. I don't know that 12 feet is-
The, the size of the property is lower.
Hold on, let me pull it up. 505.
The, the one property has a, I thought the testimony was-
505.
-a two-story building.
Okay.
As opposed to a five-story. And one, and one building specifically, we had several people testifying. I mean, my problem is, I don't have a measuring tape and I can't go out there right now, but there was testimony saying that it received an eight-inch variance as opposed to the 15 that's being asked.
Got it. I found it. Okay, so 508 is the property to the north. And that one has five-foot setbacks, more or less, and so I don't know, again, I don't know if 12, it's, yeah, it's a smaller, it's a smaller building, I understand. But in terms of like the, of the setback request here and its impact on the adjacent owners, I, there may be more of an impact on one side than there is on the other. And I, I, I would vote no on this just because I would be in favor of the, I would be in favor of the applicant contemplating further, you know, if perhaps there is some, you know, something that would be able to meet all the criteria but be more compatible with either one or both sides of the property. So for that reason on this, for that reason on this motion, I would vote no.
Okay, does anybody else-
You're voting, you're voting that it does meet the, the motion isn't to deny it, you're voting that you would, you're saying you would vote to pass it.
No, I didn't say that. I said I would vote no on this motion that's on the floor-
To deny.
-because I would be in favor of the applicant taking, you know, him, them taking some time to reconsider what would constitute compatibility with their adjacent property owners if the board so decides today that what's proposed in front of us is not entirely compatible.
Okay. Any other comments?
Are you saying we should have deferred this until we had more-
I don't want to say what we should or shouldn't do. I'm just telling you that based on the motion on the floor today, that that is how I'm going to vote and for that reason, so that everybody understands.
Okay, any other comments before we call the vote? Okay, this was a motion to deny. Go ahead, Leslie.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Checkman?
No.
Bronco abstained. Ms. Furtick?
Yes.
No.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
No.
Ms. Scott?
No.
So there are four noes and three yeses.
Okay, so the motion failed.
Motion failed.
We'd need another motion, motion to approve.
Right.
And then just state why you want to approve it.
Okay, who wants to make that motion? Jay, you want to make that motion?
Well, I guess I would ask the applicant, you know, is, if we can do that, you know, is this, would you like to defer and, you know, and perhaps figure out if there is, you know, something that might, a different amount that might, you know, lead the board members here to believe that it is compatible? Because that's, that's how we have to evaluate the criteria, and it seems that some of the board does not think that it is compatible.
Shari, if the applicant agrees to defer, we may defer it, correct?
Yes, you just need a motion and then a-
Right, right, right. Thank you.
Andrew Schein, the, the problem with deferring is that there's, there's no other solution to this. We don't have the room to provide parking and drive aisles that meet the code on a 100-foot lot with the required, with the, the half the height setbacks. It's just not possible to design the building like that. The city's engineering department would have, would throw a massive fit if we proposed anything less than a, the required drive aisle width, and that's, you know, it's only a 100-foot lot, so we, we can't, we could defer, but there's really nothing design-wise that can possibly change in this to-
Andrew, what about the, the balconies we talked about?
Well, we, we could, if you want to make a condition to add balconies, I'll take that today if you want.
But there were, like, for example, for example, there were some of these other, some of the other sites that received setback variances, you know, also scaled back as they-
That's, but that's not how the code is interpreted anymore. The setback is from the highest point of the building, no matter where on the lot it is. Those previous ones, they were allowed to do the wedding cake tier style, but we need stairwells. Stairwells are a certain width, they have to be in a certain spot, and they have to go all the way to the top. We, there's no, this, this site was specifically researched and designed to be compatible, and there's just no more room to shrink it. We have the lowest, lowest frontage of any, of anyone that's gotten yard modification, so we're hesitant to defer it just because we, we already minimized the development on this site.
Jay, do you want to make a motion?
No.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'm going to try to do it as eloquently as Mary did the opposing side because I'm hoping- because I'm hoping that Shari's gonna hold my hand through it. I'm not sure exactly what I need to reference, but I would like to make a motion to approve the project as presented with the conditions that have been laid out. What am I missing, Shari? Hold my hand.
Yes. Okay, so you would like to say motion to approved? And is it based on the facts that you've heard, the testimony that you've heard tonight, the documents that you've reviewed, all the evidence in the record?
Yes.
And are you applying the conditions that are in the staff report, including that in your motion, that they must be complied with?
Yes. I thought that was already in there, but yes.
Thank you. And that's, that's good.
That's the motion. Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Yeah, and that it meets the applicable criteria that's in the resolution for you, which is 47-536, 47-238, 47-2311, 47-252, 47-253. Is that correct?
Yes.
How does she know? Okay.
Just don't make me read the resolution.
Mr. Gannon seconded that motion. Is there any discussion on this, or shall we call? Shall I read the resolution? Okay. Resolution of the Planning and Zoning Board of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan Level 3 development permit for the property located at 500 Hendrick's Isle, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the RMM25 zoning district for the development of a five-story structure with seven multifamily units, and approving a waterway use and yard modifications, case number UDP dash 2, S21050. Leslie, please call the roll.
Mr. Cohen?
No.
Mr. Checkman?
Yes.
Mr. Bronco abstained. Ms. Furtick?
No.
Mr. Waymup?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
No.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Four yeses and three noes.
Okay. All righty. Okay. Let's move on to case number five. UDP dash S21031, site plan Level 4. 54 multifamily units, hotel and hotel. Yeah, it's on, sorry. When I move my head like that, it, you don't hear. Let's give these people a chance to leave, I guess. Okay, I'd like to start out with disclosures from the board. Steve?
This is item five?
This is, yeah, this is the sunrise site.
Got it, okay. Site visit, email, email from the opposition attorney from La Club, public presentation January 20th, and a CBA presentation on another date. Applicants' counsel, and email letters from residents. That's it.
Thank you. Shari?
I spoke with the applicants' counsel, Ms. Chalkis, and received various letters.
Okay, Mary?
I spoke with Ms., I spoke with the applicants' counsel. I spoke with Bill Brown and Stan Eichelbaum. I visited the site, and I had an email from Craig and Cynthia Gilmore.
Okay, John?
Spoke with applicants' counsel, visited the site, received various emails.
Mike?
I spoke with the applicants' counsel. I did a site visit, got an objection letter from Olive Judd, and I received a few emails from residents through the City of Fort Lauderdale.
Can I add Olive and Judd to my...
Sure.
Thank you.
Red?
Emails, Olive and Judd. I, I got a call. I thought she was talking about the last one, but we weren't able to discuss anything, but I got a call from Ms. Chalkis. Last week I was busy, and then today I was in federal court, but I got a call from her, but we didn't have a discussion.
Okay. Jay?
I got a call from the applicants' counsel. I've received the various community letters, and I did a site visit.
Okay, I did a site visit. I did speak to the applicants' counsel. I did get a letter from Olive and Judd, and I got multiple emails through the city on the topic. And I did speak to Bill Brown as well. I think that's all my disclosures. Okay. How much time do you need to...
20 minutes.
20 minutes, okay.
Is that how long they typically get?
Who's, who's asking that question?
Me. I was just curious. Is that how long that we usually give to the applicant?
I, I try to give them what they need.
Okay.
But would you like me to change it?
No, I just, I was just, I, I just didn't know.
Okay.
I'd like to see if she can do it in a minute.
Pardon?
I'd like to see if she can do it in a minute.
Okay, can you get on to one minute? I'm just kidding. Okay, go ahead, please.
Good evening. Neceria Chalkis with the firm Lockery and Chalkis, appearing on behalf of Sunrise FTL Ventures, LLLP. They are the owners of the property. That is an entity that's controlled by Integra Investments. We're before you this evening for a site plan Level 4 approval for a project that is in the Sunrise Lane area zoning district. I don't know if we're able to put the PowerPoint up on the screen. There you go.
It's on our screens.
Okay. Let me see if you, can you see my cursor as it moves around?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure. So we have a number of our consultants here. We have our entire development team. So to the extent that I can't answer your questions, I'm sure that there is somebody with us this evening that will be, be able to address this. What we're gonna do is present, I'm gonna do a brief overview of the project and explain what the proposal is. And then Cecilia Ward, who is our planning consultant, is gonna come up and walk through some of the code requirements. And also, we received that letter from Olive and Judd, the attorney, the law firm that's representing La Club, and we have reviewed all of their objections. And Cecilia will be walking through some of those objections from a planning perspective and address how we've, how some of those are just not applicable, or how we, we meet the code. The other representative that we have on our consultant team that's gonna be presenting this evening is Carl Peterson. Our traffic consultant Suzanne Danielson, who you all know very well, is on vacation, on a well-deserved vacation. So Carl Peterson, who you all also know, is standing in her place and is very familiar with the project. So I'll go ahead and do a brief, as brief as I can, overview of the project, so you all can understand the proposal. So the site that is before you this evening is the, it's located on Sunrise Boulevard. It's the site that's outlined in orange on this aerial. The project is called Ocean Park Hotel and Residences. It is a project that will have a separate building that has the hotel, and then you have a separate building that has the condominium components. This is a context plan. The area that is outlined in red is the Sunrise Lane area zoning district. It is a zoning district that is specifically designed for the Central Beach Regional Activity Center. And there has not been any development, there have not been any development proposals in this area in about 23 years. The last time something was proposed in this area was La Club International. A lot of the folks that are here to, this evening are, they live in La Club, and a lot of the letters that you received are from residents of La Club. The context of this area, we have Sunrise East Condominium, which is our immediate neighbor to the west. That building is a condominium building that has 20 stories. You have Coconut Bay, which is immediately to our south. That is a condominium and a timeshare. So there are some units that are condominium, and then there are some units that are timeshare. And then you have off to our east is the 7-Eleven. We were not able to acquire that property. That will remain. Apparently, we're told that that is one of the top grossing 7-Elevens in the company, which we're told is very busy, so I guess that's possible. But we tried to get that, and they just were unwilling to sell. It would have made a really nice rounding out of that block if we could get it, but we just simply were not able to acquire that. And then further off to the east is the Carlton condo, which is 17 stories in height. And then to the south of that, you have the Fort Lauderdale, oops, I went too far. Fort Lauderdale Breakers Hotel, which is 17 stories, Marine Colony Villas, which is two stories, and then you have La Club condo. That was the last development that was approved back in 1999 in the Sunrise Lane area. That is at 15 stories. This is a close-up of the site. Currently, the, the site has, it, it, there are two restaurants on the site, two restaurant buildings. One is the Franco &amp; Vinnies, which everybody knows very well. That has since closed once they sold the property to my client. The Mexican restaurant, which is located right in the middle of the site, that also closed down, but that was a operating restaurant, a Mexican canteen, I believe. And then off to the east, I'm sorry, the west, the west end of the property was a former gas station at one time, and then when the bridge expanded, that access, the access was closed off, and so that use became certainly not a, a gas station site. So it became a, an auto rental agency. And then off to the east, oops. Off to the east, you have the Franco &amp; Vinnies building, and then other retail buildings that consist of tarot card, tarot card reader, reader, a massage studio, and also a scooter rental facility. One of the things that you notice when you look at this site is that it is almost all buildings in concrete and asphalt. There is really no, there's no drainage on the site. There's no landscaping really to speak of. And as a result, what caused, what the, when it rains, all of that water sheet flows onto Northeast Ninth Court. The, the project that's before you this evening is gonna take care of all those issues as, as most, as all new projects are required to contain all of their drainage on site. So we're gonna be correcting that issue, and that'll greatly improve the drainage along Northeast Ninth Court that some of the residents have expressed to us as an issue. The other thing that we're, is gonna happen with this new project is the two access openings that are located along Sunrise Boulevard. There's two access openings. One, that's next to the Franco &amp; Vinnies, and then there's another access opening farther east, closer to the 7-Eleven, that is also gonna be closed. And we met with FDOT, and we had a pre-application meeting with them. The access openings along Sunrise Boulevard do not meet their code. Their access management plan that they have, it's a Florida statute, and an access management plan where the distance separation between access openings are required to be a certain distance apart. The bridge, as you can see, if you've been to the site, you know that the bridge starts to ramp up. So there's a guardrail that starts right here in the middle of the site, and then it starts to ramp up or down, as you may, if you're coming down on that side. And as a result, that access opening is really, has been determined not to be safe. This is a rendering of the project's 3D photorealistic rendering facing south. The project consists of two towers. One is a hotel tower, which is the east tower. It's 100 rooms. There is a rooftop restaurant. That building is 12 stories, or what I call 11 and a half, because the 12th level is not a full level. The 12th level has a 3,210 square foot restaurant, which is located at the very, it's indoors. Sorry, my, this mouse is a little sensitive. So this is the restaurant here on the top level, and then you have a pool bar that's located where my cursor is right now, and then you have the recreational deck for the hotel guests. The condominium is 54 units. We're allowed to have 60 units by code. That building is 11 stories in height, and again, has active rooftop amenities, the recreational deck with some chairs for the residents to relax, and some other outdoor seating. All of the mechanical equipment is all enclosed within the mechanical room structure, so there's no exposed mechanical like you see in some of the other buildings on the beach and in the downtown. The, you could see here along Sunrise Boulevard, the ramp to that goes up to the bridge, or down, depending on what direction you're going in. That sidewalk here, so the landscaping that's along here is gonna be extended. Sorry about that. I keep pressing this cursor, and it keep, it keep the mouse pad, and it keeps advancing the slides. So the, the, along Sunrise Boulevard, you have the sidewalk that is existing there, the landscape island that is located between the sidewalk and the travel lanes. So there's some protection between the pedestrians and the sidewalk. And then you have the area right along the south end of the building, or I'm sorry, the north end of the building, this area where my cursor is. That's where the sidewalk then splits, and it goes up the bridge. And then you have another sidewalk that separates and goes along the underside of the bridge. That sidewalk is owned by DOT, and it's gonna remain. But I wanted to just clarify that this rendering, I think, I think some folks were a little confused when they saw this rendering. They thought that maybe there was another vehicular access opening here, and that is not. It's actually a wide sidewalk that forks into the sidewalk that goes up the bridge, and then the sidewalk that goes on the underside of the bridge. So this is a rendering facing north now. So since we're closing all of the access points along Sunrise Boulevard, we are, our access is now gonna be from Northeast Ninth Court. We're proposing one access opening for our valet, the main entrance to the, to the development. And then when you pull in, so this, you see it, it's been between the two buildings, and then the valet will pick up your car, and then take your car down to the subterranean garage. So one of the nice things about this project is that there is no garage that's visible from the street. All of the garage elements are subterranean. So we have a 205-space parking garage, all subterranean. It's unlike any of the other projects that are in this area. If you visited the site, you would notice that all of the other projects have essentially a podium that's exposed, and that's the parking garage, and then you have a tower that rises above that. In this case, we have no podium. All of that has been sunken into the ground, and then you just have the, the towers that come up out of the ground. The, the other things that we're proposing along Northeast Ninth Court is we're proposing all new parking, all new parallel parking spaces along the south side of the right-of-way. We're proposing all new drainage. We're burying all of the power lines that are located on that street. So there's over, I think it's about 600 feet of power lines that we're gonna be placing underground. So, and I have a rendering that will show that in the next slide. In the next slide after this. So this is a, the site plan and how it lays out. So you have the hotel tower, which is on the right, and then you have the condominium tower, which is on the left. Each building has its own loading area. So you have the condo loading area. All of it is contained within the building volume, so if a truck is coming in, it actually pulls into that yellow area where it says condo loading, and comes into the building to load and unload. You then have, on the opposite side of the bill, on the opposite side of the project, you have the hotel loading. And obviously, that is a larger loading area than the condominium. That loading area is all in yellow, and so it allows for additional vehicles and additional trucks to be able to pull in there. It is a wider, obviously wider, loading area from the property line to the building. That area is 40 feet in width, and then you have a couple of bays where the trucks can pull in. Also on the bottom floor, and this is a credit to your staff, we did not have any active uses on the ground floor of this project. And they, they said we need to see some ground floor activity. And so we added the grab-and-go and a public plaza area along Sunrise Boulevard that will be open to the public. The public plaza area, we're gonna be granting an easement to the city. And then we're also granting a pedestrian access right through our property, which is loc, this access, I'm sorry, the pedestrian access is located along here. It'll come, it'll travel to the north and then link up with the public plaza. This is a nighttime rendering. I'm gonna speed myself along here because I think I'm running out of time, and I have a couple more speakers. This is a nighttime rendering, and in this rendering, you can see the loading area that's located along, the hotel loading area that's located along the east side of the property. And then these are the slides that show the streetscape improvements, burying the power lines. We are adding new sidewalks on both sides of the street. There are absolutely no sidewalks right now on either side of the street. The left photograph shows you what's there now, and then the right photograph shows you what is proposed. And these are just straight site comparisons of the before and the after. In addition, we are installing new drainage in the street to, this whole street is gonna be reconstructed. It's very large expense. This is not a small street. It's not 200 feet of frontage. It's 550 feet of frontage. Here's also a 16-inch water main that's gonna be installed, brand-new water main that's gonna be installed, and connecting to the main that exists out on Sunrise Boulevard. This is a rendering facing east now, so... This is a rendering facing east now, so off in the distance, you see the Carlton Tower, and again, shows you how much of an improved streetscape this project will bring. And in parallel parking, the curb and gutters, new drainage, burying the power lines, the sidewalks, and landscaping. This is a rendering showing the Sunrise Boulevard improvements, and again, this is, this does a very good job of showing what we're having on the bottom floor, and that is the, off in the distance there where you see the little umbrellas and the trees, that is where the public plaza is located, and that will be, will be giving the city an easement for that area. There's been a lot of discussion about the setbacks, and, you know, that we are requesting these reductions as part of our Site Plan Level 4. That is something that's allowed under the code, it's not a variance, it's not even similar to the project that you just considered. This is in the Central Beach zoning area, and as a result, the actual SLA requirements state that your height is half the height unless you go through a Site Plan Level 4 process. There are no special criteria in the code for the modification of yards, like there was with the previous application. All you're required to do is show neighborhood compatibility. And this is a dense and very urban area. So the top graphic that you see is the code-required side setback. So if we were to provide 60 feet along the east and along the west, the top rendering is what that would look like. We're only required to have 24 feet of separation between the buildings. So the buildings would be essentially brought closer together, and there would be a 24-foot separation. What that does is essentially create a wall. It allow, doesn't allow for as much light and air to flow between the buildings, and as a result of that, the views from the neighboring condos become more, they become less. So what we have done is the bottom, what we're proposing is the bottom graphic, which shows the building separation. We have 99 feet of separation, where we're only required to have 24, and then we've pushed the buildings out to the side setback. So we're providing 40 feet on the east, and 10 feet on the side, because our neighbor has a 6-inch setback. So it didn't make a lot of sense to have a, and their tower is setback even farther. So it didn't make sense to have more space on that side, simply because our neighbor's setback is almost zero. When you add up the required setbacks on the top, the 60 feet on the east, so that the, going back to the top graphic, when you calculate the setbacks, 3, 60 feet on the east, 60 feet on the west, 24 feet of tower separation, that equates to 144 feet of open space, whether that's setbacks and tower separation, but it's 144 feet. With our building, we're providing 149 feet total. So the placement, this is a classic example of how you can place buildings on a site that actually enhance views, and you provide more open space.
Nectoria, you've got three minutes left. Did you want Cecilia?
Can I, well, can I, can I just use some of my rebuttal? I think I always have 10 minutes of rebuttal.
Yeah, you can rebuttal, but if you want.
All right, I'll move on. This is, okay.
It's up to you, I'm just telling you.
I think, I need to get through a couple more slides.
Okay, go ahead.
So this is the placement of the, how that lays out. These are actual photos and renderings taken from La Club. We actually took a drone and took some shots, and that, that is what those building separations look like. And then, lastly, in 1999, La Club also received these yard modifications. My law partner actually handled the approvals for La Club back in 1999. Their building's 150 feet in height, they have 18 feet on the north, 18 feet on the south, 10 feet on the east, 20 feet along the right-of-way, and 20 feet along the rear. So what we're asking for, I think in some of the correspondence you've gotten, there's been some communication that says that what we're requesting is egregious. It's not. It's actually very much in line with the pattern of development and what's in context with the neighborhood. And I'm going to go ahead and hand it off to Cecilia, I cut into her time. There you go.
That's okay. Cecilia Ward, planning consultant, on behalf of the applicant. I'm going to go very quickly through the preview of my planning review, and then I'm going to get into the responses to the objections raised by La Club. I did a, first of all, I have over 30 years' experience as a certified planner, 40 years as a planning professional, both nationally, with private and public firms. I had the pleasure of working for the city of Fort Lauderdale, and one of the major projects that I worked on, and headed, and was the head, lead on, was the update to the city's comprehensive plan and the update to the city's zoning regulations, which led to what you now have as the ULDRs, or Unified Land Development Code. So I have intimate knowledge of those provisions. I did review this application and found that it is consistent with the city's plan for revitalization for the Central Beach area. It's been in effect for over 30 years, that it's consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, that it's also consistent with the city's ULDRs, most specifically as they relate to the Central Beach and the SLA zoning. I'm not going to read all of this, since we're short on time, but I did a thorough review of all the criteria in the SLA zoning district. As Nectoria pointed out, we comply with the use, with the density, with the height, and with the setbacks as provided under the SLA zoning. I also did a review of the adequacy and neighborhood compatibility standards. I'm not going to go through all those. You have written documents in your backup that gives a thorough review, based on my professional experience. One thing I would like to point out, as Nectoria said, the reason why there's activity on the rooftop is it's encouraged by the code. It's encouraged to have human activity, pools and pool decks, and we are required to screen the mechanical equipment, which we've done. We're required to provide green roof landscaping, which we have done, and we've also voluntarily limited the hours of outdoor amplified music, and will comply with the noise ordinance, of course. Responses to the issues raised by La Club, and I just would like to say, based on my review of what's been written, it appears to me that this is either misread, or misinterpretation, or misunderstanding of the code. Many people without intimate knowledge of Fort Lauderdale's code do not realize that the Central Beach has very unique zoning regulations that are applicable to the beach, and not the rest of the city, and the rest of the city has zoning regulations that are not applicable to the Central Beach. So I'm going to walk through these, and I'm sure your staff would be able to confirm what I'm going to go through. The Central Beach encourages a mixture of uses. In fact, standalone, residential, or standalone hotel are discouraged. You're trying to get this synergy of activity going on in the Central Beach. This does not mean that we're layering density. What it says is you can have density for residential, you could have density for hotel, they can be combined, or you can have them as standalone. So it's not a layering. Also, the FAR criteria in the code only applies to the commercial retail. You cannot take the entire square footage of the buildings and apply floor area ratio, and then in addition, apply density. The mixed-use provisions under 47-1821 are absolutely not applicable to the Central Beach, so anything that addresses that are not applicable. Those were written to allow mixed-use development outside of regional activity center areas in the city, with providing flexibility units or flexibility acreage. The existing building footprint, comparing what was there to what we're proposing, is not a code standard, so you cannot even consider that as part of a site plan review. Setbacks, as Nectoria indicated, they do comply with the Level 4 review. It's not a request for relief. The minimum setbacks are allowed under the SLA. Support has been provided in a comparative analysis, showing the larger building areas and the separation that exist on those buildings. As she noted recently, La Club also received that, as well as many other buildings in the Central, in the Central Beach. This is not unique to this application. Just going on, parking. We comply with the parking requirements of the code, which is Section 47-20. Table 1 provides the residential use requirements, which we adhere to. Table 3, a specific to the SLA district, requiring parking for hotel. Mixed-use parking, the one per 333 square foot, only applies to the commercial, retail, and restaurant use, so, and we comply with that. Mixed-use parking, again, in 47-1821, does not apply. Only one more second. Parking lifts are being proposed, very normal situation for Fort Lauderdale. We've done that in many places in the city. We comply with the drainage standards. Building permits will be issued for, at the time of the building permit, would be issued a building, sorry, South Florida Water Management District permit, in accordance with what's been applied actively throughout the city over the years. Under neighborhood compatibility, this is the most important point I would close on. Residentially zoned property is not an applicable term under neighborhood compatibility for properties located in any regional activity center area, including the Central Beach, most specifically with this site plan. It's never been applied to any other project in the Central Beach, and therefore, those provisions under neighborhood compatibility do not apply to this site plan application. And we've already addressed rooftop noise. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. Okay. Do we want to wait on questions to the applicant and keep going here forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Carl has three slides on traffic, which I think are important, because that is something that was raised in the objection letter. So if we could have him go ahead and address those slides, he does need to be sworn in.
Okay.
Good evening, Carl Peterson. For the record, I have not been sworn in, so if you could do so.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Carl Peterson, here on behalf of DC Engineers this evening, offices at 12743 Northwest, 13th Court in Coral Springs. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida, 33 years of experience. Take heart, I'm the last presenter. I've only got, I think I've got five slides, but I'll be as quick as I possibly can, and if I gloss over something, I'm sure we'll have time in rebuttal for me to elaborate, or if you have any questions as we go through it. I'm going to start first with this trip generation information here. The top of this slide represents the trip generation characteristics of the existing development. We understand that there are many vacancies there. This is really provided for informational purposes only, just to demonstrate what the trip generation characteristics were of the site, or what they could be, should the, these buildings be repopulated with new tenants. I just want to clear up some confusion here, I believe, in some of the correspondence you may have seen. In terms of our analysis, we did not take any credit here, or in deducting this traffic from the network in terms of our operational analysis. Okay? It's just provided for informational purposes, so that you can, as a decision-maker, consider what the trip generation magnitude was previously, or what it could be, and compare that with what we're proposing. So I just want to make that clear. At the bottom of this slide is the trip generation characteristics of the proposed development, and it shows each of the uses that's proposed here on this site. In the objection letter, we did note that there was, they did take issue with the internalization of some of the traffic. I can go into that a little bit more later. We took that to heart, we, it's a fair comment. We made some adjustments, as you can see on the screen here. The traffic numbers have been adjusted accordingly, and we still have a reduction in traffic in the PM peak hour, regardless of the reduction. I'm going to skim through this very quickly. One of the comments that we received in the objection letter was that we should have used the 11th edition of the Trip Generation Manual. That was not available at the time that this study was initiated. It became available afterwards. However, as you can see in this table, it works to our advantage. The trip reduction goes up. So we certainly would like to take advantage of that, and I believe that we will be updating our analysis accordingly, as this project proceeds forward through the approval process. The next slide here is the operational analysis results of the two study intersections, Sunrise Boulevard and Birch Road, as well as Birch Road and Northeast Ninth Court. As you can see here, the top half of the circle represents the level of service in the AM peak hour. The bottom half of the circle represents the level of service in the PM peak hour. As you can see, both of these intersections are operating very well under current conditions, and will continue to operate very well with the proposed project traffic. This is a summary here, very quickly, a reduction in the overall PM peak hour trips, and we do meet the Level of Service D standard. Just lastly here on the valet analysis, we did a valet analysis in accordance with ITE Procedures, Institute of Transportation Engineers Procedures, and we have determined that in, the six spaces that are provided for the valet, and those are required, six spaces, will be adequate to meet the service here, provided that we provide somewhere between three or four valet runners to process the cars as they're arriving and departing. And with that, I'm going to wrap it up, and if you have any questions later, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Great, thanks very much.
I have a question.
Okay, I think Mike's first. Go ahead, Mike. Oh, you're telling Mary, okay.
My, I have a traffic one, as long as he's up here. So on your net, on the, on the net PM, or the net trip, hold on, total trip, total peak hour trips per minute, you're showing a negative 3. Is that correct?
That is correct. With the adjustments that were pointed out in the objection letter, we adjusted the PM peak hour internalization factor. The reviewer, as part of the objection, had a concern with that. We adjusted it.
The negative 3.
And it's still negative, the number is still.
I'm asking because on the staff report, so I should probably, Jackie, when we get to it, ask the staff this, they're showing the allocation for Ocean Park on the beach trips generation is negative 19, but you're showing it as negative 3.
And that's a result of the change in the internalization factor in the PM peak hour. So it's still a reduction, it's just not as great a reduction under the 10th edition of ITE. But as you can see on the next slide there.
It's small print, so actually.
Okay. Yeah, if we, one of the comments that we also received in the objection letter was that we should use the 11th edition of the Trip Generation Manual.
Yes, right.
And we don't disagree with that now. I mean, obviously, as I said, it was not available at the time that we did the analysis. Now it is, and we'll be happy to update, because it actually results in a much larger decrease in traffic in the PM peak hour. And I might just add quickly that there are two other factors that we could have applied here. Number one, the hotel use, we've treated this as a traditional hotel. It is going to be an all-suites hotel. All-suites hotels generate less traffic than a standard hotel, and so that will further increase the reduction. And as part of this analysis, we took no multimodal reduction. In other words, other means of transportation, primarily biking and walking, et cetera, which is obviously very common in this area, that will also further increase the trip reduction. So the total trip reduction will probably be somewhere between 60 and 80 trips in the PM peak hour.
Okay, and so, okay, I just didn't know who had done the staff numbers, because they seemed different from yours. It's a negative regardless, I'm just fully interested in the net results.
The staff numbers were reflective of our original traffic study. We've updated it since, so the staff did their job properly. We just need to update that information for you.
Okay, thank you, and I have other questions when you get to that.
When do you want to ask the questions?
Well, not from him, though.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask him, or?
You just, you have no questions for him.
I've asked him what I wanted to know.
Okay.
Mike?
Okay, I see another question coming.
Yeah, a quick question for you, as it relates to the valet requirement. This is the first, I've heard of that. I mean, how do you regulate that? Is that something that, I've never heard of that before, you need to have three or four valet runners? Who monitors that? Who dictates that? Is that something that's new to the code, or it's just the first time I'm hearing it?
I don't know that it's anything that's new to the code. It's really a measure of determination, determining the adequacy of the valet parking spaces that are being provided. So in this particular development program, six valet spaces are required, okay? So now the question becomes, okay, well, how does that operate? Okay, in this particular case, all vehicles are being valet. They're going to be in a subterranean garage. They're also going to be using lifts, and you'll have to run, you know, you'll drive the vehicle to the garage, and then the runner will come back to the valet stand. So the question from an operational standpoint, which is what we addressed in our Traffic Impact Study, was how many runners do we need in order for that to work efficiently and properly? Because we obviously don't want traffic spilling out on the Northeast Ninth Court, we don't want congestion on site, we want it to operate adequately. So we went through that analysis with those parameters, the number of valet runners. We did tests to find out how many we need, and it's based upon distance from valet stand to the garage, processing time in the lifts, bringing cars back, the distance to get back to the valet stand, and that's where we came up with the conclusion that three or four runners during the peak hour is what's necessary in order for six valet spaces to work properly.
Okay, Mike, you good?
Mary, you want to ask him more questions?
Yeah, I just had another question, I don't know which of you wants to answer it, but it was about, you referred to the outdoor amplified music. So I know you told me in your presentation that you had a pool bar of about 164 square feet, if I recall correctly, and that that was going to be for the people at the pool. Are you going to, are you anticipating having events on your rooftop, on the hotel?
I don't, I don't think that that's been programmed yet, but what we have agreed to do, because I know that amplified outdoor music.
Yeah.
At night, especially, is, is an issue for people. I know about it downtown, we hear about it a lot. Read about it in the paper. So, and this is actually something that Sunrise East and the Carlton Tower had requested of us. And we've agreed to limit the hours of outdoor music, outdoor amplified music, Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to. Monday through Thursday, 11:00 AM to 9:30 PM, Friday, 11:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Saturday from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
11:00 PM on both.
And that, that takes away the, we didn't, these are not limitations on the hours of the restaurant that's on the roof. These are limitations on how much, you know, the amplified music that, that goes on outside. You hear about it in the downtown all the time.
Right.
That then takes out any of the arguments that, well, are you meeting the noise ordinance? So that, no, the amplified music stops at a certain time, period.
11:00 on weekends and 9:30 on weekdays.
That's correct. And we're required to meet the noise ordinance no matter what, even when we are playing it.
And, and another thing I've heard from some of the people that come from the downtown is that you can direct, you can direct the music away from the towers, which I guess in your case would be north towards the park. Is that, there weren't any conversation about that?
I, I don't think they've gotten into that level of detail, as to where the speakers are going to go and, and whatnot. I, I would imagine that's, you know, that's something we can take a look at between now and commission, but.
Yeah, and maybe that's a condition you would agree to.
Yeah, yeah, something that we should probably think about now.
Direct it away so that it wouldn't be going to the adjacent buildings. Okay, and you did the building separation at 100 feet between the two buildings?
Yeah, it's 99 feet, correct.
And you answered my roof, okay, thank you, that's it for now, thanks.
Dr. Yeah, I, I just want to echo the same concerns with the amplified music. You know, this is a, the hotel is a, a commercial use, it's getting parachuted into a residential, albeit condo situation, and so I don't know if there's any historical data, if you will. I know that downtown, which is where I'm more familiar with, and, and music that's being generated, you know, you're not hearing it at the ground level. And so, with the water implications as well, I think that needs to be seriously studied. And, and I don't know if projecting it north is the answer, because you've got a waterway up there, and it projects over Birch State Park, and it, you know, it goes to Sunrise Harbor, or, you know, I, it depends how loud it is, but it's, that is a concern of mine, is that that is kept in check. It'd be a different story if there were more commercial activity around there, but I think if I were a resident, even at 9:30 at night, when you're starting to tone it down, it may be a little bit loud.
Yeah. One of the things that became apparent to us when we, when, or me, when I visited the site, and from talking to some of the, the residents that already live there, is that the noise that comes from Sunrise Boulevard and from people going over the bridge, when they get to the top of the bridge, over the metal part, it is already very noisy. The music may be the least of, I think, the, the concerns in this particular area, but we've, we're taking care of it. We are, we are taking care of it by agreeing to limit the hours.
My concern is just don't discount it, you know, I, I, I think it's a true concern, you know, regardless of the dynamics that's going on in this little corner of the world. It could be across the street, it could be half a mile down the road.
Right.
It's, it, it, it's a real concern, for me it is.
Yeah. Understood.
Okay, is there any more questions, or do you want to, can we proceed with the public hearing? Before we do that, is it the board's wishes to make the staff report part of the record?
Make a motion that we make the staff report part of the record.
Second? Brett? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, on the, for the public hearing, I would like everyone to spend three minutes or less, and if you represent an HOA or an association, we'll go five minutes. And I'd like to know, is there anybody in the room that has not been sworn in? Okay, would you please stand, if you plan on speaking, to get sworn in?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Thank you, Shari. Okay, first speaker. Please give us your name.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. I know you allow HOAs five minutes, but I'd be respectful of your time, I'll take it less than three, because there are several speakers here tonight. First of all, I want to ask, excuse me, member of the community and President of Central Beach Alliance, on behalf of our membership and our boards, we want to personally thank each and every member of this Planning and Zoning Board for what you do for us and the community, and thank you. I also want to thank council and the developer, which has done their due diligence on public outreach and neighborhood involvement and input for the past year on this project. They first came to the CBA Board in July of 2021, met with our board. Now I remind you, our, the Central Beach Alliance Board does not take a position for against any project. We want to make sure the project is far enough along in the development review process in the concept, the concept of a project, that it's ready to go to our membership. We found it that to be the case. We did, they did present to the membership in August of 2021, and gave the concept and the original site view of what they, developer was proposing. Then, as required by the code, they had a public outreach, which many of our members participated in on January of 2022, and then they listened, and the final input, they came back to our membership, the CBA membership, and our monthly membership meeting in February of 2022 of this year. It's the goal of our, of the Central Beach Alliance, to always be transparent with all development projects, and we strongly encourage and assist our membership in understanding the land use codes, and encourage the adjacent property owners to have open dialogue with the development. By doing so, they will hear the residents' concerns and their, their issues. In the public hearing, and also during the CBA memberships, the concerns were, as you will hear tonight, traffic, drainage, public safety response. A lot of those have been addressed by council. Some of the positives, as also addressed, that we felt were improvements to the infrastructure, streetscape, lighting, underground utilities, and the storm sewage system, and improvement in the water lines as it relates to the infrastructure. However, in February, the project failed to receive a majority for an approval. However, it was very close, there was strong support for, however, there was not enough to get a majority to approve it, therefore it failed. I'll be happy to address any more of the issues as it relates to the voting. Primarily, there were four condo projects that are immediately affected, which is Sunrise East, Coconut Bay, the Carlton, and Le Club. Back in February, two of those projects, Coconut Bay and Carlton Towers, or I'm sorry, Sunrise East, were in favor of the proposal, and had worked with the developer. The two opposing primarily were the Carlton Towers and Le Club. Since that February meeting, I recently learned that Carlton Towers now is in support of the project, having since February of 2022, worked with the developer and council to reach that agreement. I'll entertain any questions at this time, and I did keep it under the timeline.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I ask one question? Maybe two? So, Bill, in February, which was like two months ago, you all took one position, but you're saying it has changed, but you haven't had time to go back to your membership to see if that has changed?
That's correct. However, I will tell you, the vote in February was 71 in favor, 94 against. 16 of those votes, if we're, it would be safe to assume, and probably more people might come out to vote for or against, but if you took those 16 votes.
Yeah, you'd have 87.
That would be an eight point, eight point swing. So by my calculations today, would be an 87 in favor with 78 against.
Okay.
So you can see, there is a lot of support for the project, and then there again, there is support against the project, primarily from Le Club.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker? I'm going to give you three minutes.
Thank you. I'm Matt Kane, I represent Coconut Bay Resort. He was mentioning we're one of the members of the Central Beach Alliance, so hello.
Hello.
But for the most part, our owners are very much in favor of the proposal. We feel it's going to clean the area up significantly, and add a lot of value to property values. That's really all I want to say, but if you want to ask me questions, I'm their direct neighbor, I've been there for a very long time, and we think it's a great thing that you guys are doing with the project.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, next speaker?
Good evening, my name is Danny Dugan, I'm the Secretary of the Board of Sunrise East Condominiums. First, thank you guys for your stamina, you really have, hang in there all night long, I see. I'm here this evening representing Sunrise East, and ask the members of the Central, not, to ask the members of the Planning and Zoning Board to support Ocean Park Development on 9th Street Court. Sunrise East is in support of this development, as it has been submitted to the city. The Board of Sunrise East has spent considerable time and energy learning about, discussing, and understanding this development. I personally have spent time reading the zoning ordinances, that's no easy task, as you guys know. Right here, I'd also like to interject, going back to the topic of the music that was just recently discussed, we pushed back on them considerably, it's our understanding that their music hours will now be way less than the city allows. We've arrived at the conclusion that Ocean Park is in the best interest of SRE. We hope the Board of, we, we hope the zoning board will support the development. Anyone familiar with Sunrise East will know that Sunrise East has an unparalleled location and views, we think, the best in Fort Lauderdale. Those who are familiar with Sunrise East will also know that we don't have a very attractive interest. As you come towards our entrance, you're confronted with, with trash, dilapidated buildings, and an annoying motorcycle rental business. Those of you that made the site visit, I hope it had an impact on you. It's a blighted area, and we're excited to see these people fix it. I think visitors to our building often wonder, why live at the end of this blighted road? There's no question, we will lose some view. However, Sunrise East believes that what we gain from Ocean Park is, is far greater than our loss. Some of the people that are objecting from Le Club, I have essentially the same view out of mind, but I've made a personal decision that I'm overall better off with this project here than without it. We're extraordinarily excited about the streetscape that is planned, we can't wait for the unsightly utility poles to be dropped below grade. 9th Street Court is going to be incredible. This development will allow us to leave our building and walk along nicely landscaped sidewalks. We'll be able to walk through the development to reach Sunrise Boulevard, instead of walking through unsightly abandoned buildings. Our beloved dogs will take outside at 3:00 AM. Right now, it's a threatening area when people have to take animals out after dark. Those of us living in Sunrise East have had to contend with people renting motorcycles and racing right up to the edge of our building, scaring elderly and children. We'll be glad to have that business gone, and the other, the other stuff that goes on, on this site as it is now. We believe the advantages of the building and the neighborhood as a whole are numerous. We hope that you'll vote in favor of it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Pete Hackenblattner, I'm President of the Sunrise East Condominium Association. We actually first engaged in the redevelopment of this property before the property was even sold, by trying to completely understand the zoning and what is permitted on the site. We developed criteria of what we wanted out of development on the site. We engaged with the developer once they purchased the property. We were able to successfully negotiate all of the issues that we had. We are in favor of the project because of improvements in drainage, improvements in public safety, drastic improvements in aesthetics, and improvement in property values. Sunrise East is pleased to support this project, and that was by unanimous vote of our Board of Directors, and we continue to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Kristi Armada, I am the attorney from Olive and Judd, I represent Le Club. I am going to respectfully request more than the five minutes that are allotted to me, and I will have several of the residents that I represent that are here, just in white, yield time, if that affects your decision. Many of them are not going to speak, because they are relying on me to represent their concerns. I need about nine and a half to 10 minutes.
Okay, are you, are you seeking party status?
I, I am their counsel, yes, I represent them, seeking party status.
Okay. Shari?
Okay. First question is, what, can you state clearly which property owners you represent, and what is the distance between those properties and this development application property?
I represent the Le Club International Condominium Association. They are one street away from the proposed development. I believe by, as the crow flies, it's about less than a mile. It is significantly less than a mile.
It's a block.
Way less than a mile, significantly less than a mile. It is one street over.
Please, please, I can't hear if you keep talking. Just one person, thanks. Is your condominium association required to receive notice under the code?
Yes.
And how are the property owners that you represent's interests, different in kind from other properties in the community, as far as their interests being affected by this application?
I, the property owners that I represent, their interests, I would argue are not different. I understand that many of the property owners are represented here today, and have provided to you their opinions. I would argue that the interests are the same, the traffic setback and code provisions that I will address are equally affected, because these people are all within the same neighborhood.
How is it different from other folks further away in the community? How would it be affected differently?
Folks further away in the community are less affected, because they are not directly impacted by the traffic concerns that are raised here, the setbacks that I'm going to be addressing, the effects that the parking provided by this project will result in.
Okay, so if you're requesting party status, that means that you're requesting the same treatment as the applicant, so you should be able to call witnesses, as well as cross-examine witnesses, et cetera, and of course have the same amount of time that they, that they were provided with. So I just want to be clear that that's what you're requesting.
I'm only requesting to be allowed to speak for 10 minutes.
10 minutes, you are not requesting party status, correct?
If, no, I do not need to call witnesses.
Okay.
I do have a traffic consultant here with me, he will, oh, use the allotted three minutes.
Okay, it's at your discretion, Jackie, to provide the 10 minutes.
Sure, sure, sure. So you want 10 minutes for yourself?
10 minutes, and I'll take less than it.
Three for your traffic, that's fine, let's go.
10 minutes for myself, and he has represented that he is going to be three minutes or less.
Good, let's do it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Shari.
I am also going to be putting that up.
Just to request, anything that you're showing the board, could you please provide a copy of it to staff, so that we have it for the record?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
I'm here this evening on behalf of the members of the Club International Condominium Association, who are all here wearing white, to communicate their objections to this development project. The Le Club International Condominium is located one street south of the proposed development. My client's general objections, which are laid out in detail in the letter submitted on the April 14th letter, can be summarized and simplified as follows. While an aesthetic improvement to what currently exists, the project is much too large for the proposed site, it simply just does not fit. The development site consists of a total of 1.26 acres. The width of the site, as shown in this picture, equals the width of eight or nine perpendicular, not parallel, parking spaces. The developer intends to construct, construct two 12-story buildings on this narrow site, one containing 100 hotel rooms, the other containing 54 residential condominium units. Additionally, the prevailing theme of the public participation meetings was that the residents of the area experienced congested traffic conditions at the intersections of Sunrise and Birch. As you can see on this picture, the existing residents have access to the buildings through two curb cuts off Sunrise, and another from Birch Road. As a result of this development, Birch Road will become the sole source of ingress and egress from the, for approximately 556 units. Today, with the two additional curb cuts, and without the added 100 hotel rooms, 54 condo units, the restaurant and rooftop bar, the intersection at Birch and Sunrise is a bottleneck for persons who want to get in and out of their homes. With traffic at times backing up over the up over the Sunrise Bridge. This project will add a great deal of additional traffic to an already overly taxed intersection. Currently existing on the site is a small one-story shopping center with six commercial uses, including the Franco and Vinnie's Italian Restaurant and the Cantina Mexican Restaurant that have been vacant for years. Yet still, the traffic is a significant problem. An addition of 100 hotel units and 54 condo units, a restaurant, and a bar will only exacerbate this traffic problem. The project exceeds the density limits of the ULDR. Pursuant to the ULDR Section 4712, the density limits are 48 residential units per acre or 90 hotel rooms per acre. The site measures a little over one and one-quarter acre. Yet the proposed development consists of 54 residential units, which is 90% of the maximum density allowed, plus 100 hotel rooms, which is 89% of the maximum density allowed. Section 4712 does not permit this type of double dipping. If a developer was submitting an application to the city for the development of a residential project only, the developer would be limited to a development consisting of 60 residential units and no more. Alternatively, if the developer was submitting a hotel project, it would be limited to only 113 rooms and no more. But here, because the developer proposes a project that offers both, it's layering the maximum permitted density for each use. The developer is applying the total 1.6-acre measurement to each category instead of applying half the square footage of the site to each category. This interpretation and calculation defy logic. It suggests that the site is twice its size, and simply put, the project is too dense for the proposed site. Further, the project does not satisfy the setback requirements of the ULDR. I admit and acknowledge that they do meet the minimum requirements set forth in 4712.5CD. But that section, pursuant to that section, unless otherwise approved as a site plan level four development, in no case shall the yard setback requirements be less than amount equal to one-half the height of the building when this is greater than the above minimums. I acknowledge that this is a site plan level four development, but we should consider that the code does imply or suggest that the setback should be 60 feet, half the size of the height. City Commission does have the right to modify the setback requirement pursuant to the set plan level four process, but should only do so upon proper demonstration by the developer that the setbacks, the setbacks proposed for the project meet the intent of the ULDR and the project, and protect the nearby properties. Accordingly, it's incumbent upon the developer to prove it is entitled to relief from the setback requirements of 4712.5. The application does not demonstrate how the reduced 20-foot setback meets the intent of the ULDR or how the provided minimum setbacks protect the nearby properties. Instead, the developer completely disregards this language and takes the position that the setbacks conform with the minimum requirements set forth in the ULDR. Also, the project does not satisfy the parking requirements. Pursuant to the traffic requirements of the ULDR, the project requires 212 parking spaces. The developer suggests that the project only requires 196 as a result of a shared parking analysis. The residential tower and the hotel tower will share an underground parking facility, which will contain 205 spaces, 150 of which are either tandem or lift spaces. This is further indication that the project is just too big for the site. The developer cannot fit the parking spaces onto the site and is resorting to providing 75% of the required spaces in creative tandem or lift fashion. This means that for a development consisting of 100 hotel rooms and 54 condo units, 21 of which are three-bedroom units, only 48 parking spaces will be easy-to-access standard spaces. Couple that with the fact that the valet stacking area only consists of six spaces means that there's going to be traffic backing up onto Northeast Ninth Court, and this area is already taxed with traffic. Additional evidence that the project does not fit is the developer's evasive neighborhood compatibility review. I acknowledge that this is in a regional activity center. The developer submitted a neighborhood compatibility narrative on March 2nd as required by 47-25.3. Many of the criteria impose additional obligations on projects that abut residential property. The developer skipped over these obligations, claiming that the project does not abut residential property. But how could that be? The site is surrounded by residential units. Sunrise East condo consists of 93 units. It's directly to the west. Carlton Tower is 128 units. It's directly to the east. Coconut Bay is 62 units. It's directly to the south. Yet the developer presents that the project is, quote, "not considered as abutting residential property," and as a result, is not required to address the criteria, criteria for developments abutting residential property. They justify this by resorting to the definition of residential property in the ULDR, which does not include the SLA zoning district, never mind that the area is home to 556 residential units. The purpose of the neighborhood compatibility requirements is to protect the residential properties from the impacts of proposed developments. To allow the developer to disregard the neighborhood compatibility requirements because the project does not, quote, "abut residential zoned property" is to clearly ignore the obvious and to disregard the intent of 47-25.3. Planning and zoning board determines whether the proposed development meets the standards or requirements of the ULDR and the criteria for site plan level four. This application does not satisfy, satisfy that burden, and thus, the board cannot recommend approval of this project to City Commission. The project exceeds the maximum density. The developer has failed to address the 60-foot setback requirement. The parking requirements are attempted to be satisfied through creative mix of tandem and lift mechanisms, and the developer cannot establish how the project is compatible with the neighborhood as it's failed to acknowledge that it is, has residential neighbors. That is without consideration to the impact this project will have on the existing traffic conditions. The developer submitted a traffic impact study concluding that the project will yield negative trips. Yet the restaurant, the highest traffic generators, have been vacant for years. This fact is not accounted for in the developer's traffic study. The club engaged its own traffic engineer to conduct a review of the developer's traffic study. Our engineer concluded that the developer's traffic study does not deliver sufficient information to support the conclusion that the project will not adversely affect the surrounding network. To expand on that, I introduce Jose Calderon from Caltrion Engineering Group.
Hi. Good evening. Juan Calderon from Caltrion Engineering Group. With all due respect to Callan, which I know for many years, and Susan, they describe as a negative impact the future development that is happening here. They describe as a negative impact what the future traffic is going to be happening on, on this location, which in reality, his own report, it shows that the land use that they are using as part of the existing conditions are not reflecting what the turning moment counts that they actually collect shows. So what I'm saying in, in lemmings terms is basically, their data shows very low numbers while the credit that the existing land use that they are applying shows very high numbers as existing conditions. So they are saying currently there is a lot of traffic when, generated by this site, when in reality is not like that. So that's the first item that I wanted to show. The second item that I wanted to say is that that land use, if you remove that land use as part of the existing conditions, you are not going to have negative impacts. You are going to have positive impacts in the, in net trips. So that's a number that needs to be revisited completely. Last but not least, obviously, once you reanalyze those numbers, the level of service that he shows, the valet parking that, analysis that he shows, it becomes completely different. And this is something that has to be reevaluated by the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question. Yeah. For the traffic gentleman. What, what did the numbers become?
Well, definitely what I'm taking is that what he shows as negative three, it could be a positive 60.
What are you, what are you basing? Do you have something to show us that you're basing it on?
Of course. He saw a turning moment count, so I want, I invite you to, to take a, a look into the report that was presented to staff.
Oh, okay.
Okay. There is a, a report that was...
His report was attached to the Olive Judd letter that got some honorable mentions.
Okay. Thank you.
So...
You're welcome.
So I guess, is it okay if I go ahead?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, just following up on what he said, on what Brad said, because I was thinking the same thing. The question here becomes, the total number of available trips left on the barrier island are 74. So you'd still be within the 74, but you'd be taking, you'd be taking 60 of those out of the trip bank. Is that what you're saying?
It could be about that number.
Instead of whatever, what, what we, instead of what they were saying, you're saying that it could be 60?
It could be around 60, but he, he shows a negative three.
I get it.
In his, in, in his analysis. Once you remove that land use, because that, that land use that it was a use as part, as part of the report is not the actual land use. Basically, that land use does not exist right now. It shows a turnover, a high turnover restaurant when that restaurant has been vacant for many years. So obviously, once you remove that land use from his analysis, the numbers become non-negative but it become positive. Once that number becomes integrated as part of the report, his intersection level of service analysis will change, the, the dynamic of the traffic pattern will change, and the valet parking analysis will change. Obviously, the, those items will need to be reverted. And as part of the segment analysis capacity, what she's bringing, it means that we pretty much will need to revisit those numbers and see if it's actually, the final numbers are going to be not exceeding the available capacity that the link has.
And if two new restaurants went in, that would affect your, how much traffic, obviously, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And one new restaurant's going in, right?
What'd you say?
One, one new restaurant's going in.
There are no res, well...
No, 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 I meant two new restaurants that are existing. These two places are out of business. I'm sure the massage parlor gets some traffic. Who knows? But, but I'm talking about the restaurants that are out of business now. If, if they didn't build what they're building and two new restaurants went in.
Correct.
You would imagine that the trips would increase.
A lot.
Or a bar went in.
Correct, a lot.
Right, I see Tim in line. So if a bar went in, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's what I wanted.
And that's a good point. That's exactly the point I was going to make, that if this building weren't built, those, those shops would, would be filled up, those restaurants, and you'd be comparing against something different.
Okay.
What time is it? Let's see, we can keep going for a few minutes. Go ahead. Yep.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me speak. My name is Richie Baptista, and I live at Sunrise East. I think Nectaria's pictures were very informative, but I have a few of my own I'd like to share on what I look at every day. I don't know if everyone can see that on the board. There's one.
I'm, I'm sorry. There's a way to put it down right next to, the IT guy's coming to help you out, okay? There's a way to put it where they can see it. Just, could you please give us a copy of what you're showing the board? Thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay. So that's my reality of what I walk by every day. There's the second picture, I'm sorry. And the third. I actually live on the fifth floor of Sunrise East. So I do my own traffic studies. They're not as complicated as what we've seen up here, but I get to see these cars every day. I am retired, also from Massachusetts originally, and I can tell you myself, besides the road race, the boat parade, perhaps the airshow, that is the most times where I've actually witnessed cars on the East Sunrise Boulevard in any kind of delay. Otherwise, my biggest problem is speeding. They speed by, so that's the traffic that I've actually seen the most. This project, to me, besides being a safe place to live, I have not, you know, when we look at these condos, we come in with a realtor, we go up to the condo and don't realize how bad the street looks until you actually live there. So this is going to be a huge improvement, safety, beautification. I think they put together a beautiful hotel and residences that will definitely make a lot of us feel safer there. And I just really hope that you guys support it. I think the benefit of having a hotel is actually slowing down traffic on East Sunrise Boulevard. It's really ridiculous. It's been a huge problem, and I think that they put together a great presentation, and I hope you guys really support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tim Siobhan. I'm the owner of the Parrot Lounge, along with my business partner, Joe O'Donnell. I live at 3315 Northeast 16th Place. The Parrot Lounge is in support of this project. We've been open 52 years. I love the beach for all these years. I'm there 49 of them. I think Joe's 45 years there, so between the two of us. We're, we're, yes, I was a bartender. I believe you walked out on your tap. In any, in any case, we'd like to give some support to this because we welcome these new neighbors into our, our neighborhood. We're, we are very encouraged about the economic impact it'll have, the pedestrian traffic. We think that the developer did a fantastic job reaching out to us, asking our concerns. We didn't run into this thing saying, yippee. We had a lot of questions. We spoke with Carlton Towers and those folks over there and our neighbors. And we are not looking for perfection, we're looking for improvement. We think this is a great win-win. And again, we'd like to share the experience of Fort Lauderdale Beach and the quality of life that we have all been enjoying for 52 years with our new neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tad Wooton. I'm a board member with the Carlton Tower. I'm also an authorized voting member with Central Beach Alliance. I was initially opposed to the project and may have been influential in its vote in February, where I initially opposed the project. We'd gotten off to some poor communication with the developer in spite of the fact that they had reached out to us and made sincere effort to communicate with us. There was a little bit of miscommunication and some hiccups, but after following that, that board meeting, they reached out to us in good faith and resolved many of my concerns and many of the concerns for the, the board members as a whole. I feel like we able to resolve and overcome a lot of concerns, and I felt like they sincerely listened to issues that affected the Carlton. I think it's aesthetically a very beautiful project. I think it's a good addition to the neighborhood, and I urge support of the project.
Thank you.
I am Steve Goodman, the president of La Club residents, who many of them are actually here tonight, and we're just adjacent, for those of you that are not familiar, next to the bonded house.
Can you move your picture so it's not making me dizzy?
Rotate it 90 degrees.
Yeah.
Is that better? Rotate it 90 degrees. Now 180.
Now it's upside down. There you go. Thank you.
And I can tell you, unlike any spokesperson from any of these neighborhood condos, I am sure that not all the residents of any of these buildings can absolutely say that with 100% certainty that the residents all agree with this project. I can tell you, the La Club residents 100% reject this development proposal. The commercial partial that we've been talking about is very unique in that it's only 100 feet wide. It's just over the length of a little bigger than one tractor-trailer rig, as demonstrated in this picture, which was just taken literally at 5:00 a.m. just a couple mornings ago. There is no doubt this property is in need of redevelopment. We do not disagree with that. We are in favor of some type of development. We are in favor of some type of development, but this is the wrong plan. To allow a 12-story hotel structure and a 12-story condominium structure in this very narrow parcel is the equivalent of squeezing a 14-foot into a size 8 shoe. It just cannot be done without a lot of pain to the neighborhood. The proposed project would encompass 236,000 square feet. This is just under a quarter of a million square feet on this very narrow strip of land. As you saw in the exhibit presented by our attorney, there are already four large condominium complexes, two resorts, plus the 35-acre Bonnet House, that are already, already challenged. Not to mention that our only access is directly across the street from the 185 acres of Birch State Park. The hundreds of vehicles that currently enter these buildings, as well as the Bonnet House, all utilize one single narrow lane. We have only one ingress and egress point to Sunrise Boulevard. Elevation changes needed to fit the two proposed buildings on this very narrow site will require termination of these two existing curb sites, as already indicated by the developer. This means that every passenger, every delivery vehicle, every tractor trailer rig accessing this 12-story hotel and condo building will need to come onto this small, narrow, dead-end street. In addition, the developer plans on narrowing the current street to allow for parallel parking on the street. Imagine the health and safety issues this will cause in our neighborhood. Many in the neighborhood, including me, purchased our properties after performing due diligence on the site question in terms of health, safety, and quality of life. Zoning laws exist for the purpose of permitting this very type of due diligence by homeowners. With the setback requirements of 20 feet, the maximum allowed structure on this site is 40 feet. The code requires that structure taller than 40 feet must have setbacks equal to one-half the height of the building. In this case, the proposed 120-foot structure requires a 60-foot setback.
Can you, can you, excuse me, I hate to interrupt you, but can you?
I'm wrapping up right now.
Thank you very much.
There's no question in our mind that the planning and zoning board exists to make a reasonable decision in permitting development projects that are consistent with the community's comprehensive plan. This development proposal that you are being asked to approve tonight fails to meet this at every level. Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question, sir?
Sure.
Second person I think I've heard tonight say that this is 100-foot wide commercial piece, and it doesn't support a hotel. How wide a piece would support a hotel? What's the minimum width for, for the width of a hotel?
Yeah, and I don't think the question comes down necessarily to the width of the property as much as the access that is around that property. And, and the problem that this particular, I'm in the hospitality industry, and I can tell you that when we're loading and unloading, it requires good access. You only have one access point down that entire street. And if you've been, all of you said you've done a site, if any one of you can imagine an 18-wheeler trying to make a turn on that street, it will block up all the traffic onto Sunrise.
I was just trying to address the 100-foot wide, because that's the second time I heard it. So I don't think that has any bearing on access.
Yeah, I don't know the exact, but there's no question that if you look at any other, there's not another hotel that has that type of density on a 100-foot lot.
Before we go any further.
Sure.
I'd like to have a motion to extend this meeting to 11 o'clock.
I move we extend the meeting. I don't think 11 o'clock's going to be ample time, quite honest. You've got two more items after this.
Three.
You got three more items. You want to extend until 3 o'clock in the morning?
No, three more items.
I, I, I suggest we, we extend it till 12 o'clock.
Okay, is there a second?
One second.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you for your questions.
We just extend it till midnight?
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're extending.
Sorry, what time do we extend till?
Midnight. 12 o'clock.
12 o'clock?
Will be drinks in. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Good evening, board. Or should I say, good late night? I want to thank everybody for coming. I am Mike Vandenberg. I am also a resident of La Club. I don't think that it's that La Club is against building something on that lot. I think we could all agree, it's unsightly. It's been unsightly for a very long time. Even when the restaurants were functioning, it wasn't very sightly. You know, it, it's a tough piece of property, and, and in today's article in the newspaper, you know, nothing has been done there since the 50s or 60s, and I wouldn't disagree with that. What I do disagree with is, once you close those two curb cuts, you know, it completely changes the amount of parking you're going to be able to fit onto this lot. Now you're going to take and redirect all that traffic around onto Birch and over onto Northeast 9th Court, which is, again, a dead-end street, which you're going to bring all that traffic down, and undoubtedly, it's going to back up. I, I just don't see how in any realistic mind someone could say there's going to be less traffic coming into this development than there is existing. When you've got 55 units, which everyone knows you have two cars per family, and then you have 100 hotel rooms, which not all of them are going to be Ubering there, you're going to need 100 spots, and then add a full restaurant on top of that is even more traffic, and then trying to squeeze it all through a very narrow valet spot, it's nearly impossible that this isn't going to be a major traffic problem for our neighborhood. You know, I have young kids. They walk these streets, they go to the 7-Elevens, and, you know, if anyone has young kids, they understand every time they hear a siren and their kid's not home, they automatically assume it's theirs. I don't want to, sorry, add 500, my, my New York in me, I got to swing my arms. You know, we add, you know, 500 cars in and out of this thing every day, you know, it's just more worry and more fear if something, you know, is, is going to happen. You know, I, I just, I adamantly disagree with this traffic study. I, I, I mean, common sense will tell you, there's a hell of a lot more traffic going to be coming down these roads than, than this traffic study has to, has, has shown us. So I, I'm pleased asking you, I'm not against the project. I, I am very much for it. It's beautiful, but it's just too big. It's just too big for the amount of space that they have on one narrow street. So I plead with the board, please, you know, reconsider this and, and, and vote no until we could get this to be a sizable project that is feasible for our neighborhood. So thank you.
Clear is clear.
Good evening. My name is Bev Yanowich, and I live in La Club International. I agree, okay. My name is Bev Yanowich, and I live in La Club International. I agree with the earlier points made by our attorney and other La Club residents about the developer's plans for the site and the negative impact all would have on our neighborhood. The project is too dense for the 1.26 acre parcel. Proposed setbacks do not sufficiently support the scope of the project. Insufficient parking. Responses to the required elements of the adequacy review criteria are inadequate. Flawed traffic impact study. The developer's neighborhood compatibility review does not address, acknowledge, or considers the neighboring residential units. I want to specifically address compatibility as it relates to noise from the proposed rooftop bar. For some reason, developer qualifies that the project is a, in a commercial district. In fact, the proposed project is surrounded by over 500 residential units. As you know, noise generated from bars, especially rooftop bars, have been a major issue all over the city. We've researched and heard about many folks in Victoria Park complaining about the rooftop bar at the Marriott Courtyard, the complaints in Coley Hammock about the balcony on La Solis, the complaints about Salt 7 from the Riverwalk residents, the longtime problems of Tarpon River residents with the Hemishy bars. We all know the challenges of noise code enforcement. We have learned that members of your committee have been among the avid complainers. Yes, the developer has offered that the bar will close tonight. I just heard 9:30 on weekdays and 11:00 on weekends. But who wants their living room to be a concert hall of bar music from dinner until 9:30 or 11:00? Residents may want to, need to go to bed sooner. A rooftop bar in the middle of over 500 residential units is not neighborhood compatibility. Thank you.
My name is David J. Rosner. I live in La Club International. I also own a bunch of units in MCV, which is less than a quarter of a block away from the site. There is no way to get out at this present moment from MCV or La Club. The traffic is horrendous. I have witnessed from my apartment on multiple occasions, which can be proven, I believe, 100%, don't take my word for it, it has to be documented, that the fire department, legal or illegal, has crossed between the properties of Franco and Vinnie and the Mexican Restaurant to come to rescue of Sunrise East. I've seen on multiple occasions, ambulance come through the property. Now they're saying the property's going to be closed. I was told, don't argue at this point because it's private property, and the ambulances, the fire department have no right to come through that property. Well, if it was my heart, your heart, our, our children being born, whatever the crisis would be, I wouldn't care. Oh, I'm sorry if I'm boring you. Anybody on the board? Uh, I, I don't understand that. Well, you, you did turn your head.
I'm just listening.
Well, you did. So with respect of you, I'm listening to you. Every word you said, I would hope you listen to me, too.
I'm definitely listening to you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I really humbly thank you. But what I swore with my own eyes, I believe can be proven 100% that, don't take my word, don't, 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 I, we, we can look it up, we can acknowledge it. It, it has to be a fact. The ambulances and the fire department have come between the properties on multiple occasions to rescue people for real reasons or unreal reasons. Now, if that was blocked, if that was blocked, and no, I'm not a person that can, you know, do a traffic study, but if that was blocked, and thank you for turning your back on me again, if that was blocked.
Your seat back.
Well, you, you did interrupt me by turning your, I apologize, but I didn't turn my back on you.
I was giving her seat back.
Oh, that was, thank you. It was magnative, so I believe it. But you still turned your back on me. Well, if it's not interesting to you, if it's not interesting to anybody, it might have been interesting, interesting to the people that were in jeopardy. So I'm saying, if they blocked the access to that way, if people, if the, if the bridge is open, and they have to come around, and they can't come around, if somebody dies, if somebody's in distress, and they can't come, what's going to come to the people? What's going to come to the people? And that's my question to you. Right now, they're allowed to come through the actress, the egress way between the two buildings, and, don't take my word for it again, ladies and gentlemen, I've seen it, so I believe it would have to be established as a fact. Not my opinion, a fact.
I, I don't mean to be rude, but you've had your three minutes, sir. I'll give you 30 more seconds.
Well, I, I thank God, if the ambulance needed 30 more seconds to come to somebody, that they had the 30 seconds, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Next.
Good evening. My name's Robert Dean. I'll only need about 30 minutes.
Okay, are you asking for it?
I'm the president of the board at the Carlton Tower. Lived there the last 20 years. I've been the board president for approximately 12 of those years. So I've got a little bit of a handle on the community and what our needs are, what our frustrations are, and I feel as though that our, our, our residents are very much in tune with what's going on here right now. We started out that we weren't in favor of this project specifically because we were afraid of the traffic. It's something we've been watching on Sunrise for quite a few years, and it seems like it's getting worse. However, that said, looking at this development, having known what, and been a regular at Franco and Vinnie's and also at the, the Mexican Restaurant, I think I can say honestly that this is not going to have the impact that everybody is screaming about. I feel very comfortable in saying things like, for instance, the, the closing of the two cuts that go through that property right now. One of them right now is closed anyway because it's motorcycle and car parking, so it's never been used in the last years I've ever seen. And the other one through the Franco and Vinnie's parking lot, if you ever try to get through there when it's full of cars, you're, you're lucky if you get through without taking your car out. So we already know that is a non-starter. I think I can say that this is going to be a big enhancement to the entire neighborhood, and I think we're all in favor of it. In one form or another, it's going to help all of us. It's going to help the beach, it's, it's going to help our neighborhood. And, and I don't think that I can see a lot of negatives. I mean, everything's going to have a negative. This, if you did the Ben Franklin on this, this wins all the way down the line, every time. So I, I'm going to say that the people in our building are very much in support of this, well over a majority of us, and the board is 100% in, in supporting this, and I thank you very much for our time.
Thank you. Okay, is, are there any other speakers for this public hearing? We can close the public hearing. Okay, we'll close the public hearing. A motion to close the public hearing.
Motion closed.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion, okay, hearing closed. Okay, Nectaria, you wanted 10 minutes for rebuttal?
Yes. I, I don't think I'll leave that much.
You need 10?
Because we, we did address the letter from Olive and Judd during our main presentation, but I wanted to touch on a couple more things that I heard tonight.
Well, we got till 12. Just take your time.
Okay. So, one of the things that you heard from, from the attorney for La Club is that we're exceeding the density. That is not the case. This is the Regional Activity Center. It is unlike other areas of the city where you are permitted to layer the uses, so you're allowed to have up to 48 units per acre for residential and up to 90 rooms per acre for hotel. We are actually below those density requirements and therefore meet the Regional Activity Center requirements. If we were in another part of the city, a residential land use category, for instance, they would be correct. You cannot do that type of what I, what they were referring to as layering. But because this is a regional activity center, that is permitted. It's 100% permitted. In fact, it's encouraged because they want to, this is a regional activity center, it's a high-density district, and as a result, you want to encourage mixed-use projects. Number two, the setbacks. I covered those. The setbacks that we're, we're providing are actually very consistent with what's around there, and they're consistent with the Sunrise Lane area district requirements. In fact, we're, there was, there's been some misconceptions about the fact that there's only a forced, or a misconception that there's only a 40-story height, or, sorry, 40-foot height limitation allowed on this site. That's not correct. The SLA zoning district, it's very, very confusing to somebody who doesn't understand the code, but there's a menu of setback options in the SLA. For this particular property, if the height was 80 feet, we could have zero setbacks. That's a by right, zero setbacks. So I don't know where the 40, you know, 40-foot height limitation comes from, but it is not based in the code. It's a misconception. The other thing I wanted to touch on was the neighborhood compatibility requirements. The neighborhood compatibility code section is several pages long. There are some things that, some sections that apply to properties which abut what they call and what is defined as residential property. Just because a property next door to you has a residential use does not mean that it is a residential property as it's defined under the code. Seems counterintuitive, right? But when you, when you look at the definition, it actually has a definition of what they consider to be residential property. Residential property are properties that are defined as property zoned RS 4.4, RS 8, RM 15. I can go through all of them, but you know what they are. They're all the R districts. The reason those code provisions are in the code is to protect neighborhoods like Victoria Park, like other areas that may have those R designations. We are, the Regional Activity Center is clearly excluded from those categories, and therefore, those sections do not apply. There are other provisions of the neighborhood compatibility criteria that specifically apply to the beach, and we comply with those requirements, including things like apply to the beach, and we comply with those requirements, including things like rooftop decks, which are encouraged in the Regional Activity Centers, to have active uses that are appropriate for human activity, and we have those on both of the rooftop decks. Number, the other issue that came up, obviously, is traffic. We addressed a lot of the concerns from the La Club traffic engineer. One of the things that they are, they are saying is that we should not be able to include the restaurants that are on the site currently today. We should not be able to include those in our trip generation summary. The trip generation summary is a snapshot. It is required of all projects that are coming to the city for approval. You must take into account, it would be illegal, frankly, for you not to include the existing buildings and what that, what was occupied in those buildings, because those buildings could then open up tomorrow with other restaurants. They could open up with a 24-hour Vinnie's if they wanted to. Those uses are still there, even though they're not occupied. You could get another tenant in there and reopen those uses. So you, they don't just go away simply because the tenant moved out. That is another misconception, and we believe that we've appropriately included those as our existing, for comparison purposes, for existing conditions. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Again, you know, we will be updating our study to, at the suggestion of La Club's traffic engineer, we will be updating our study to reflect the 11th edition, which came into effect after our application was filed. Once we do that, Mary, you asked the question of how many trips are going to be going back into or being returned into the Regional Activity Center, and it's going to be far more than three.
Okay. And just so we're clear, I just want to know for the purposes of the chart, because whether we take the 60 or whether we take the negative 3, it's still within the number that's there, so. But I do have a question since you brought up traffic. Can I go ahead and ask her?
Go ahead, Mary.
Thanks. All right. So one thing that we heard several people talking, talking about, were the total number of residents for the, and you know, your graphics great on the buildings, but it's not up here, so, the total number of residents and hotel guests that will be using that one street to get, to gain access. And just, do you have a total number of all of the, someone threw out the number 500 if you add whatever y'all are going to generate as far as hotel guests and residents that would be using that one street, and just to comment on whether, on how you perceive that as far as being reasonable or not? Because I know you're doing away with the curb cuts. So the obvious other answer would only be to have an entrance where you have that.
Yeah.
Space between the buildings.
Yeah. We have to do away with those curb cuts. They don't meet engineering standards. FDOT has a, an access management plan, and that access management plan requires certain distance separation requirements. That street is a 40-mile-per-hour street, Sunrise Boulevard, and in addition, the way the bridge comes down, it bisects, comes down basically at the center of the property. Our finished floor elevation has to be at, what is it, 7 feet? 7 feet NVAD. You have a road that comes down, and then you have the guardrail that essentially prevents, you know, you from having any curb cuts, and then you just simply, the distance separation would not be met. We have 7-Eleven next door to us that has an access opening onto Sunrise Boulevard, and then you have the street light at the intersection. So at having access on Sunrise Boulevard is not something that is going to be feasible. We met with FDOT, and when you have access to your property from another, from another means, which we do, Northeast Ninth Court, they close down those access points. So as far as the residents, I don't know exactly how many, you know, residents we have that will be on the site, but we do have 54 units and 100 hotel rooms, so it's kind of, I don't know if I'm answering...
Looking for the totality and totality in the area, because I heard several numbers.
Oh, the totality.
And whether, and whether that's sufficient, you feel that road is sufficient, do?
Yes, we do feel it's sufficient. And the traffic study that we did, the analysis, we did a trip generation summary, which is where we just evaluated, these are the trips, and then this is the net reduction, this is what the city's going to get back in their Regional Activity Center pool. And then we did an analysis. So we did a little x-ray, and then we did more of an MRI. And what that MRI showed is that the intersections, we did not take into account that the restaurants were occupied at that point. The MRI actually did, you know, they evaluated actual trip counts of what is out there, and the restaurants were not occupied, so those were not included in our calculations. We added them back as if they're brand new. And that study showed that those intersections are operating right now at a level of service A and B for Sunrise and Birch, and then at the intersection of Ninth Court and Birch, it's operating at a level of service A and A, which, you know, I mean, it's, that's extreme, you can't get higher than that.
Okay. And I have one other question, but it's not related to what I just asked.
It's not what?
Related to what I just asked. Can I ask it? It's for, yeah, okay. I just, we had a lot of speakers tonight. I know we've had this conversation, but we have heard nothing from Bonnet House. Do you have any indication as to how they feel about this, since this would also be the one street that you used to get back to their property?
Correct. So the, we have met with the Bonnet House. We've met with them, I think, about two or three times. Their primary concern, and they're actually developing a plan for Birch Road, which they're going to present to us, because they want some help with facilitating that plan. But that, Birch Road is their front door, and we agree that Birch Road could look prettier. There is some, there are some complications with making that happen. There is backout parking with Coconut Bay and the Marine Colony Development, which is, so Marine Colony here, and then you have, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay. So you have Marine Colony here, and then you have Coconut Bay over here. So they all have backout parking along Birch Road. So they're coming up with a plan with EDSA, member of EDSA is on their, the Bonnet House Board, and they're going to present that plan to us, and we're going to see how we can help facilitate that. But that plan is still being developed. As far as the building goes, there's going to be a very good synergy, and I think they recognize that there's going to be a good synergy. We're not going to have any meeting space within the hotel. So there is going to be a very good opportunity for Bonnet House, which does have weddings, and they host a lot of events. There will be a very good synergy between this project and the Bonnet House. And so I think in that respect, I think they're, they recognize that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Everybody awake? Okay. If there's no more discussion, I'll entertain a motion. Anyone that's going to make a motion, I want to make sure that you include the 10 conditions that are in the staff report, as well as the findings of fact, I guess. I think we did that a long time ago.
That's what I was thinking. They're all starting to run together.
Yeah, yeah, we did that earlier. So there's no motion?
I'll make a motion to approve findings of fact tonight, as well as staff's conditions presented in our handouts here.
There is, we do have one comment on the conditions. It's very minor, but I neglected to mention this before. There are three easements that we're going to be giving to the city. We need, we need those clarified, that there are going to be non-exclusive easements, because they are going to overlap with some of our undergrounding of the FPNL lines. So we just want to make sure that the, we are going to give you those easements, but they need to be non-exclusive.
Is that what the report says?
It, it doesn't say that they're going to be non-exclusive, so.
Ella?
Staff is okay with changing the language to state "non-exclusive" if the board wants to make that added change to the condition.
So I'll amend my motion so that the easements are non-exclusive.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Are you going to include in there something on, something more substantive on the noise control, such as researching additional directional or something?
I mean, to me, it sounds like they've had in-depth conversations with the residents in the area, and you've got the noise police out there, which, you know, that's obviously a heightened concern citywide. I don't know how applicable it would be. I'm concerned about noise as you, and I think...
Yeah. I'm just thinking that one of the speakers said, I know we heard that early on, and then the speaker brought up the fact that you're not going to really want it blaring into your house, to all of those residents at, residences at, you know, 10:30 at night. And I know we hear this from around the city, and we can't do anything because they're already built, but in this case, it's not built, so whatever they can do to control noise, I understand the hours, and I think it's great you came to that agreement, but what other measures they can take, I think they should look at to...
I think they're going to be regulated by the noise.
Yeah, I'm not...
Which we're working on right now.
Yeah.
I'm not educated enough to dictate.
I don't know how, yeah.
I would also point out that, that there is a condo component to this, to this building that's going to be right next door to us, so there is a very big interest in making sure that we keep residents within the development itself happy, and if they're getting noise and, you know, that...
Yeah, I understand that. I just think from what I've listened to in some of the other areas, that there are additional things you can do, and whereas everything that's already been built, we're going to, we're hopefully going to get a new noise ordinance to address that, this is a chance to try something before you actually have a bad situation, to try to incorporate some measures that would address noise.
So that's, that's not a bad idea. I don't know how you memorialize it, being that they've got two components to the site plan. They've got a hotel, which is a commercial use, that's going to have amplified noise on their rooftop, and they're going to have their own residence directly to the west. I don't know if you can put something in the, in the condo docks of either the hotel or the condominium that the amplified noise coming from the rooftop bar or entertainment that's going on out there can't exceed 80 percent of the city's recognized decibel or, something along that line. I, I don't know what that is, and so I don't want to handcuff...
Yeah, so can we just put some language in that's kind of a little broad, but that they're going to research?
I'd rather have the city commission do that, to be honest with you.
I just want to make one comment to this board. Do you recall a month or two ago, I talked about the agent of change and the importance of that?
The what?
Concept, agent of change?
And that is coming with a noise ordinance, but this...
No, it's, that's nothing with noise ordinance, has to do with zoning and bringing in a more intense use when you're, nobody, anyway. I don't know that we can do anything, Mary. I agree with, I agree with Mike, as far as letting the commission...
Can I speak to it?
Please do.
I think the applicant did volunteer some restrictions on the times.
She did.
Is that part of, well, it is part of the record, but did you submit that as part of the application?
No, that was, that was something we committed to with the neighbors, and, you know, we're happy to have that made as an additional condition of approval. We're already including it in the condo docks, so that it's clear for all subsequent purchasers and residents, but we're happy to have that as a condition of the approval as well.
And you'd volunteer that, then?
Sure, we could proffer that.
As a condition, right?
So you're going to add that, John?
Want me to read the hours?
You've already read it for the record, so I will amend what I said previously and add the voluntary condition by the applicant for the restriction on the hours as presented earlier tonight.
Accept that, Mike.
I'll amend a second to that, yeah.
Okay.
I apologize, Chair Scott, but I'm, I'm not sure I understand the motion, and I wanted to go back. I don't have record of accepting the staff report, so would you be doing that now with the...
We'll do it. I thought we did it, I thought we did it very early.
I don't have record, but...
Just generally speaking, the staff report's already a part of the record. It's online. You guys read it, or I think you do, and then, so it's already in the record. So, you know, we don't really need to do that.
Okay.
You know, it's just, it's there, so.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just however, though, I think you made a comment, though, that it would be changed to include that the easements are not inclusive. Is that not correct?
John, you want to...
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
I can hear you.
Sorry.
You bring the microphone closer to you, honey.
I understand about the, accepting the staff report. However, I thought that there was an additional comment that the staff report would be amended with the condition that the easements were not inclusive.
Exclusive.
Exclusive, sorry, didn't hear you.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, the conditions four, five, and six, the easements required under those conditions would be non-exclusive.
That being said, maybe it's for the attorney, how do you need a motion? If you motioned for that, I did not hear who was the first to...
I did amend my motion to say...
I amended my second.
...easements would be non-exclusive.
Your original motion was?
The report provided by staff and the 10 conditions would be included as part of the approval, with the exception of the language regarding easements, would, that would be non-exclusive easements in lieu of what was in their report. And lastly, we would incorporate the hours for the noise ordinance, and that was a volunteer by the applicant, voluntarily made by the applicant. Those are the modifications.
Thank you. And your second?
Mike Wayman seconded.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Are we ready to vote? Please call the rule.
Mr. Cohen?
She said Cohen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very close. Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
I'm, I'm gonna... Can you come back to me?
Sure. Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Okay.
Passes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving right along. I think that microphone, Leslie, I think you have to really pull it closer to you. When your head's down and you talk, it's just...
I'll do that.
Just, I'd just bring it closer, maybe.
Sure, sorry.
Okay, we'd like to keep going, so let's keep going. Okay, let's, next is case number UDP...
Do you have your microphone on, kid?
My microphone is on.
Okay.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. There's no second, John. Okay, case number UDP Z 22003, a rezoning by the city.
That's kind of an oxymoron.
On which topic?
So are you...
The next one? Okay.
Couple of times I checked that I wasn't here and I signed...
Tired.
Madam Chair, does it make sense, it's John, hey, does it make sense to hear number six and seven together?
I think so.
With this one, this one's the city one, right? Could we please do it separately? There's a reason why.
No, we're not going to do them together.
Because...
I move we do them separately.
Okay, I second that. Oh, I'm the chair.
All right, let's go.
Thanks.
Okay, let's rock and roll. Number six.
We're on a slippery slope downhill. I'm thirsty.
Me, too. Where can we go? Is there anything open?
I have to go to a bottle club or something as late as we're going to...
Oh, the police headquarters.
I think we're going to go to the parrot. We're going to go to the parrot.
Good idea. Where is Shabon?
He's over there warming up. He's calling me a cat.
How's the parrot opening, though?
I don't know. Text him and ask him.
Let's see what it looks like.
Okay, city staff, ready to please give us a presentation on item number six?
Is it called Parrot Lounge or Parrot House?
The Parrot, the Parrot Lounge.
You want to do disclosures? Madam Chair, do you want to do disclosures first?
Excuse me?
Do you want to do disclosures?
For the city?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have disclosures on the rezoning of the 1.138? Okay. Can we have disclosures on the rezoning of the 1.138 acres?
None. None.
Steve Gannon, site visit.
I did a site visit, and I spoke to Mike in the lobby when I was out of here.
Any other disclosures?
None.
None. Is that okay? You ready, Sherry?
Sherry doesn't have any.
Yes, sorry.
No problem. Okay, let's, let's go, Lorraine.
Lorraine Tappan, Urban Design and Planning. The item before you is a rezoning of 1.2 acres of land from Boulevard Business District, and also the residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to community facility district. The purpose of the rezoning is for the proposed police headquarters. The proposed police headquarters is proposed to be built directly east of the existing building. The, currently on the property, the police headquarters and also the adjacent Public Works Fleet Division have the, not only community facility zoning designation, but there's also the B1 and the RMM25, making it difficult without the rezoning to have consistent dimensional requirements for any redevelopment of the site. And as you know, the city did acquire one piece on Southwest 12th Avenue, and that had the, zoning designation was RMM25. So this rezoning will make it easier for the building to be constructed. If any changes need to be made in the future, it will be easier to work with the consistent zoning designation. Generally, the CF zoning is compatible with the adjacent land uses around the area, and the good thing is we have that neighborhood compatibility section of the code to rely on for buffering requirements as well in the future. The setbacks of the community facility zoning districts are also actually more generous than the B1 zoning district and the RMM25. They require 25-foot setbacks versus the smaller setbacks in those other districts, including the RMM25. And that's the presentation. I can also, I can answer any questions that you might.
Thank you very much. Should we make the staff report part of it?
I'm moved.
Just kidding. No, I'm just kidding. That was the staff report.
Thanks, Lorraine.
But why don't we make the staff report part of it, since they're the applicant? Aren't they, aren't you the applicant? Is the city the applicant?
Yeah, so I was kidding.
I know, but I think the staff report should be part of it.
Well, it is part of the record. Sherry already said it's already.
Whatever. I think they're two different things. But, okay, can I just ask you a question? Did you go to the neighborhood association with this, with any of this that we're talking about tonight?
I'm going to have the, actually, the app, the folks representing the city talk about their efforts to communicate with the neighborhood.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. My name is Mike Von Romulan. I'm with Keith. Our address is 2312 South Andrews Avenue in Fort Lauderdale. And we're working with AECom as well as Moss General Contractors in terms of the redevelopment of the police headquarters. Staff made a great presentation. I will not go into mine. I'll save you the time for that, and I'll just answer any questions. The question that was brought up was neighborhood association meetings. The, the development team has met with the Sailboat Bend Neighborhood Association three times so far, and we have also made a presentation to the Historic Preservation Board where they recommended approval of this project.
That's great. Good deal. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, which, which historic board did you present to?
The Fort Lauderdale Historic Preservation Board. This actually, this property is located in the Sailboat Bend Historic District, although it is a non, non-contributing property, but the, because it is in the district, the, you know, all the applications were brought to that board for recommendation.
So the property doesn't overlay that, it doesn't overlay at all?
No, it, it is in the, the Sailboat Bend Historic District, yes.
So are you guys going to amend that map to exclude yourselves?
No, not at this time. We, we actually made the presentation to the board, so that, that recommendation will go to this board as well as the city commission.
And I'm just on the historic note, but isn't that historic property directly behind there, the Northside School, is that what it's called?
Southside.
Is that Southside?
Westside.
Is that what it's called, Westside?
That is what it's called. Northside, Southside, Eastside, Westside.
I'm so confused, sorry. It's late. Okay, that's, that's all the questions I had.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, let's open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Please come up to the, oh, good. Were you sworn in, sir?
Yes, I was.
Excellent.
My name is Mark Dickerman. I am a resident of Sailboat Bend. I actually can see the police station from my dining room window. I'm here in, first of all, I want to thank you all for your service. I'm vice chair of the Citizens Police Review Board, and I know what a thankless job we all have to do, and, and the public really understands that you're giving up your time. I mean, to go to midnight on a, on a weekday evening is, is a lot, so thank you. I rise. One, I'm going to answer your question. As far as changing the boundaries of the historic district to exclude the police department is a slippery slope. We don't want to go there, because which homeowners are going to want to change that as well? So I could tell you that I would be opposed to it, and most of the neighborhood would be opposed to it. I'm just rising in support of item six and seven. I am looking forward to seeing a new police station. This current, this current building is a sick building. It leaks, so whatever it takes to get construction started and, and shovels in the ground, I support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other people in the room that would like to speak on this issue? Okay. No. Okay, let's move to close the public hearing.
I move that we close.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing closed. Are there any more comments that the board wants to make?
Move to approve.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mary, move to approve, second. Okay. Leslie, call a question, please.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Scheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. Wayman?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, case number seven, S21029, site plan level four. Who will be our presenter on this?
Hi, good evening. I haven't, I haven't been sworn in. Do I need to be sworn in?
Yes, please, yes.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I do have a presentation. Madam Chair, I do have a presentation on the building.
How much time do you need?
I mean, I can keep it brief. There's three items that we're requesting relief from zoning code four on the building. I can just address those rather than kind of giving you a overall summary of the, the project. Is that, is that fair?
Microphone up, if you would.
Why don't we hear what they are, and if they seem egregious or something, then we'll.
Can we get the disclosures on this one, too, please? Thank you.
Does it have anything to do with side yard setbacks? I'm just kidding.
It, it is a front yard setback, but it's not abutting any residential.
Before the, before they speak on this, are there any disclosures, please, from the board?
None.
No.
None. No disclosures.
None.
Sherry?
Site visit for Steve Gannon.
For 24 hours.
You what? Yeah, you used to hang out there. No. I was in there when I was like 16, throwing eggs. Hit a police car.
So again, thank you for the time and the effort to be here late at night to review all of these projects. My name is Evan Siegel. I'm the architect of record with AECom. Been designing this project for the last year and a half, working in close conjunction with the Fort Lauderdale Police Department and the city through this really exciting, challenging, and ultimately game changer for the Fort Lauderdale Police. You know, we all know that the facility is in disrepair, and that we really need a, a building to, to replace the failing facility. So through, you know, a lot of study, lots of work with the city, we determined, you know, the best location for the facility on the existing piece of land. There were three, three elements that we had challenges with that were requesting a public purpose relief from zoning regulations. So just a quick graphic here showing the existing facility there in the center, and the two residential buildings that will be demolished in order to clear way for the new facility on the east side of the site. So one thing to notice on this diagram is the location of the existing facility. We are maintaining the operation of that facility throughout the, throughout the construction of the new project, and one of the things that that created an issue with was how do we fit the proposed community center on the site? So through our cost analysis with Moss Construction, we had proposed that building in the footprint of the existing building, but it increased the cost by almost, I think, a million and a half to $2 million in terms of how they were going to mobilize the project. So one of the things we proposed was to push that community center building forward, but it did encroach on a 20-foot, 25-foot setback on the front yard. So we are currently proposing a seven-foot, 17-foot, 10-inch setback. We are complying with the landscape requirements between Broward Boulevard and the building, and the sidewalk requirements. So that is, that's one of the issues that we're, we're requesting relief from, and it's only that proposed community center room. The rest of the building, the headquarters building, which is kind of a large rectangle here, is actually set back 43 feet from the property line, so we're exceeding the 25-foot setback. And along the east side, which is actually 12th Avenue, which is adjacent to residential uses, the headquarters building, the first floor is, I believe, 37 feet from the property line, so we're, again, exceeding the, the setback. And then the, the massing of the building at the second and third level stepped back even further from, from that to, to really mitigate the scale of the building from the residential uses. The parking garage complies with the 25-foot setback, but it is right on the, on the setback here on the, on the south side. But there's no, you know, there's no encroachment or, or relief being asked for on that part of the site. So the second element that we were requesting relief from is a parking reduction. The current zoning code requires one to 250, one space for every 250 gross square feet of, of space. That would require, I believe, 750 cars, if I'm not mistaken, and we're requesting a reduction to 577 cars. We've done an, an analysis with the police department under their current uses and future uses, and determined that the, the parking requirements for the facility with their current demand and future demand would only require that 577 spaces. So those were the first two, and the third one, the third requirement under the code was we are going to be providing a shooting range for the, for the police department on the second floor of the parking garage on the south side, generally where the curse, I don't know if you can see the cursor on the screen. That, that shooting range, based on the staff report, complies with all of the, the zoning regulations for it. There is a, there's currently a shooting range in the existing facility, but it's not operational due to the deficiencies of the, of the building. The shooting range will be, will mitigate sound from all the neighbors, mitigates the, we have a proper ventilation systems, air conditioning, all the things required by the code to, to facilitate that use on this property. So I'm happy to answer any other, any questions regarding those, those requests, but I did, wanted to keep it as brief as I could.
Thank you. Mike, you have a question?
I do. Unfortunately, I'm a little too familiar with the inner workings of Fort Lauderdale PD, being that I'm married to a Fort Lauderdale police officer. And I've got one question that relates to what you're presenting and one that doesn't, so I'm going to ask them both real quick. When you do your parking analysis and you have many police officers who take their patrol cars home when they come in for briefing, does that work into your calculation?
Yes, so our count, accounts for the take-home cars and when they come to the facility. So we're accommodating, leave 60 spaces on the ground floor of the parking garage for those, those briefings. You know, they come in for 10, 15, 20 minutes, get their briefings and leave.
I just want to make sure you weren't accommodating just for the people that were working eight-hour shifts in the building.
Understood.
My second one has nothing to do with you specifically to what you're asking tonight, but it's a simple yes-no question. Has anybody approached AECom about bringing the call center back into this facility?
No.
Sorry. No?
No.
So, so let me go that, go a little further. So there's no?
I can't hear you. I'm sorry, madam.
In the, pardon me?
I can't hear you. Your mic.
Here we go. So has there been any discussion at all? Is there, is there any room in the building where in the future, if we have our own call center, it could be located?
We do have a, there is a space on the third floor that's being held for future operations. I can't say that we have actually considered future growth for a call center.
Would it be big enough for a call center?
I'm sorry?
Would it be large enough to accommodate a call center?
I guess that depends on how large that call center would be. I don't know, I don't know what the program of that would be, so. Not, yeah, just not knowing the number and quantity of people, I couldn't answer, but there is future growth space within the facility that we, you know, we've programmed for future growth of officers, a fourth district potentially, so there are, there are flexible spaces.
That's all I got.
Okay, any other questions? Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this topic?
That police officer's been sitting.
I know, I think he wants to talk. Did you want to say something, sir?
That's Lieutenant Solomon.
He wants to adjourn.
He's been with us throughout the project.
Yes, yes, how you doing? I'm Lieutenant Solomon. I've been tied to this project since its inception, since we were running around trying to get the bond passed. I just wanted to thank you guys for putting the time in this late, and, you know, the teams worked very hard. We've done what we can with the community, meeting with Sailboat Bend, as they pointed out, and we've really worked hard to try to accommodate everybody, but a lot of the asks at this point, you know, are, are tough. Obviously, inflation is not helping us on this project, so big changes down the road and things, additions are going to be tough, so I just, you know, want to thank everybody and obviously hope for your guys' support. And any questions that you have, certainly reach out.
You guys deserve it. I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, let's close the public hearing?
Yes.
Moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mary, do you want to say something?
No, I just am going to make a motion, or Mike is, and the other one of us is going to second it, and, we're going to do it in a hurry so that inflation doesn't.
Mike.
Mike made a motion. I'll second it. You're making a motion.
Can everybody be quiet here for a minute?
Yeah, I made a motion.
Do you want to include all the conditions in the staff report?
No, I do.
Thank you, okay.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Is that a threat?
Is there any discussion on the motion? Leslie, quick, call the order. Call the.
Order. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry. Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Okay, motion carries. Okay, last but not least.
You know, you may have gotten us out of here by 11:00. I shouldn't have.
I told you that.
That's why I wondered why 12:00. You have to stay until 12:00 now.
Okay, case number UDP T22002. Amending list of permitted and conditional uses, airport, industrial park, Carletha. Is that right?
Can you, is that good?
Did I say your name right?
Carlean.
Carlean.
I was close, Carlean.
Close.
Yeah, whatever. It started with a car, so whatever.
Carletha.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. Carlean Grant with the Development Services Department. I do not have a presentation for you tonight because of the simplicity of the text amendment that I, that I am presenting. This, the amendment is to amend the Unified Land Development Regulations Code for the permitted and conditional use tables for the general aviation airport and the airport industrial park zoning districts to add a provision to the tables to allow for the Airport Advisory Board to make a recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Board to approve proposed uses that are not specifically listed in the use tables, subject to meeting the intent of the zoning district. The request is being proposed due to frequent requests over the years to address, to add uses to the zoning districts that do not have an adverse impact but do not specifically align with the specific categories in the use tables of the zoning district. That is all for me, but I'm here for any questions.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, Carlean?
Great presentation.
Great presentation. Thank you for not using your whole 30 seconds.
And I'm happy to make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Leslie, could you call the roll?
Quickly.
Do, do they need to include staff conditions?
First, procedurally, if you would, check if there are any members of the public that want to speak on the item.
Yeah, no, they all went home. Is there any members of the public that would like to speak on this issue? Okay, there's none.
In my motions, including the staff report with the motion to approve.
Thank you.
It's one motion.
I'm trying to close the public hearing.
Okay, move to approve, move to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
You don't need a motion to close it. You can just close it, Jackie.
Thank you, it's closed. Okay, Mary, you want to make your motion again?
Jackie, I'm moving to adopt a staff report and moving to approve in the same motion.
Second.
Mike's second. Okay. Procedurally, can we, can we go, D-Way? Can we vote? Thank you.
Mr. Cohen? Mr. Sheckman?
Yes.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Vertig?
Yes.
Mr. Waymouth?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes. Thank you all very much.
Do you want to?
Is there any more business?
Yes.
Mike wanted to make a couple communications, I think.
Yes.
Mike, Mike, what communications?
Um, I've got one communication to the, to the City Commission, one to the Sustainable Department. Are you guys trying to change your name? Right, geez, just when I was getting used to whatever it is.
Yes, it's been changed.
And then one other comment. So, so my first, my first ask is to the Department of Sustainable Development. When we get packages this big, is there any chance of circulating it a little bit earlier? I, I get mine like Friday afternoon. And a lot of times, I'm northbound to the lake, not that that's a reason. But when I've got this much stuff to look over, it's suffocating. If it's, if it's a light agenda, but when it's a heavier agenda, I know you guys have got certain parameters that you've got to do. So I'm just asking if there's a way, you don't have to respond to it.
On this one, I got this on Wednesday, this big package. Did anyone get it earlier than Friday?
I think I, I think I got it, I think I got it Wednesday or Thursday. I always wondered why we don't just get it on a thumb drive. Like, it feels like, you know, I, I'm sure there's a reason for it. There's some code that says it can't be on a.
No, there actually isn't.
It's the Urban Forester.
We, we would be happy to provide it electronically.
I would love it on a thumb drive.
Okay.
Because I'll just bring my laptop instead of schluffing.
I second that. I agree.
But some people may not be able to copy if they want to. So like, just a thought, what the school board audit committee does is they give you your choices to whether you want a hard packet or a digital.
We should, we should maybe, the, for the good of the city, maybe we should let applicants know that they can put it on a hard drive and then we don't, they don't have to circulate. I mean, this must cost them ridiculous.
Right, what would happen is we would actually do that on staff end just so you'd get a consistent application.
Yeah, you could reuse them.
Yeah. Or we could, I mean, we could even do links, to be honest. We have links to these documents that could be forwarded to the board similar as the public accesses them. You can just use the links to access the backup.
I know, not for, not for you, Jackie, but for everybody.
I was trying to be brief on this. You guys are carrying it out. So my next thing is to the City Commission. Okay, can we get rid of these things?
Yeah.
This is horrible for having these three.
Oh, I have some news for you. No, 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 it's more, it's more comfortable down here. We can stare at each other.
But I mean, you can't hear people's communications. And, and not to be hypocritical or anything, but you've got 150 people in here sitting elbow to elbow, and then we've got this. I mean, let's, let's move on, folks. And the federal court just ruled. Last thing is just an observation.
And it just came across the phone that it got appealed.
So are you adopting that as a communication to the City Commission?
You guys, let Mike, let Mike speak, please.
The last thing which was a very interesting observation for me is that there were people tonight upset in the Sunrise Lane District, about 500 people that live there and another 150 that are coming. I think that's what it was, is 650 residents, residential units. And we talked about Hendrick's Isles today. And if you, those of you that did a site visit and drove all the way to the end, how many units you think are on that single road that dumps out onto La Soul without a traffic?
Yeah, because, because of all the decisions the boards made over the years.
Embrace it.
Traffic is all.
Anyway, thank you for humoring me. I usually get frustrated when Jade wants to communicate.
No, you did great.
You're tapping my foot.
Good job, man.
I, I get, I get the thrill.
I want you to feel comfortable.
For the record, please, is, are, are, are any of that, is any of that intended to go to the commission as a communication? Can we have a vote of the board on that?
That was, Mike made a motion, I think.
I made, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Wait, Mike, can you please speak in the mic? You see, we have to comply with the law with that closed caption or we'll get sued.
So my motion, my motion is to return the City Hall chambers to pre-pandemic conditions and layout.
And I will second that.
Is that okay? Or do you want me to?
That's fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great.
Could we also just get an idea of who would like the files electronically through a link? So, Mr. Cohen?
As long as you can click the link and you don't have to download the files physically.
No, you just click on the link and they, they're available. So.
Excuse me, oh, sorry. Do they need to do number six as well? For the good of the city of Fort Lauderdale?
What's the question?
There's nothing for the good of the city. There was just communication.
Okay.
Are we adjourned now, Jackie?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
For the good of the city is to get the call center back to the police.